Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, March 24th, 2016. If we could please rise for our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start meeting off with our consent agenda, which is approval of public hearing minutes of February 25th, 2016, regular session minutes of February 25th, 2016, joint meeting between Finance Committee and the School Committee of March 9th, 2016, and regular session minutes of March 10th, 2016, as well as acceptance of warrants 38 P-16 and 39 V-16.
So move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, tonight we graced with the presence of Chloe Martins, which is very nice of you to come. You're a ninth grader, which that's why I was surprised when I saw her.
Yeah.
Like, wow, they're really...
They went down the line.
Really, yeah. They're prepping you. But I remember when your brother was here.
Oh, yes.
Isn't that funny?
Yeah, I do too.
How is your brother doing?
He's good.
Both, they're both doing well?
Both of them.
Good.
That's good, good. So how are things going at the school?
Pretty good. The chorus band concerts went really good, and tonight, of course, is the Worcester College concert, and that should be fun. And, well, we also have spring sports started this week in tryouts, both baseball, softball, and lacrosse. And then also the blood drive is April 4th, and I think we will be selling tickets next week for that.
The what, which drive is it?
The blood drive.
The blood drive, okay. So April 4th?
Yes.
And so those are the students that partake in that?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
And you're selling tickets?
Well, it's more like...
Take your blood, right? We get to watch? Is it an open blood drive? Can members of the community go or no?
I'm not really sure. I think it's just really students who do it.
Okay.
And they've done this before?
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
And we provide them with water and things.
Sugary stuff.
In arms, in case they faint.
I think we're gonna have like a snack area.
Snack area, right.
That's, that's good. And the frolic is coming up.
Yes, it really is.
So when are the tickets for that going on sale? Do you know?
I'm not really sure when those go on.
Probably soon though, right? I mean, it's early.
That's right, I forgot we have to buy tickets.
Yeah.
Or anyone who's going.
And I'm in charge of the food, so it's filed set.
Oh, my goodness.
I just realized they don't allow Gatorade, so I had to contact everybody and say, "No Gatorade."
Oh, boy.
What do you mean, "Oh, boy"?
That's a big job, food for that many kids.
I just did sign up Genie.
Genius, genius.
Yes, and everybody was just so generous.
So you are set.
You know, bring, you know, I just left, you know, category, anything you want, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
They had the Pembroke Family Dance was...
Last weekend, Margaret?
The Shamrock Dance?
Yes, the Shamrock Dance.
How did that go?
And their food just came out of the woodwork.
It was wonderful. It was an excellent time. So many parents were...
Bleeding, Margaret.
There are so many details that go into the band, and you don't notice it because it's just flawless, and just have so much fun. Lots of raffles, and I hear they raised $2,000.
Wow. And where does that money go to?
That money is going to go to the, this current fifth grade, next year there'll be the sixth grade, and it will go to their activities.
Wow, that's great.
Celebration committee effort. Their food just came out of the woodwork. And the ice cream place donated.
Jeff and Maria's.
Jeff and Maria's. And Scott Jones. Was the music up on the stage, and that's always a treat, and it was, it was really, I just couldn't believe it, there was nobody there, then the place was mobbed.
And I will put a shout out, there are Red Sox tickets, there's a raffle, so that will be going out to families for the next couple of weeks. And then, so, work, work tickets to the Red Sox.
That's good. The concerts were really great.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was really nice. You guys always do such a great job.
And the one they just did, the clinic, the one that was Mr. Messina's Concert Band, the one that got snowed out, and then they did it again Tuesday. I went to that, that was fascinating. The gentleman who did the clinic with the students was from, the director of bands from Gordon College, and so he's, it's in preparation for their MICA tournament. So the three songs that they were going to play in the, in that tournament, they played, and then he sat in the back and kind of...
Critiques them, right?
Yeah, he critiques them. And then he comes up on the stage, and, and he actually literally like takes them through different parts of it, and has them, who can make suggestions of how they can make it better, and then, it's fascinating, like, I don't know music, so it's like, let's start at stanza 22, and, you know, permisivo, and all these musical terms. It was fascinating, they knew exactly what he was talking about, and you could tell that they really improved. They sounded great anyway, but they really improved, and so I thought, what a great idea to have someone, you know, from a college who, who does that, and to come, and he was so, I talked to him after, he was so impressed with the band in general. He said, "I just want to listen to you play a couple of times, I'm just gonna, just play to the end, I want to listen to you play, you do this so well." So it was really, I think it's great that Mr. Messina and Mrs. Leflam and Mr. Terry gives the students opportunities like that by, by bringing in people who can give them pointers and, and work with them. I think it's great. They only get better that way.
Yeah, that MICA, they always do good at that, too.
Yes, they do.
From last year. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for coming. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda?
Are we on the agenda?
You are.
You are, so why don't, yeah, so why don't you come on up? Katie and Amy.
Welcome.
Thanks for coming out.
I'm Amy Sanderson, I'm president of the Support Staff Union with Kim Reel, who apologizes, she can't be here today.
And I'm Katie Legear, and I'm the treasurer of GESA.
Thanks for coming out.
Former president.
Former president, yeah.
Yes, former president.
Secretary wants to.
A little of everything there.
We just want Katie out. It's nice to have the co, though, it's nice to have a...
It is great, yes.
Person that helps you along with it.
Definitely, and she's helped us through so much, because she knows everything. Okay, so, do we want to give these out first? We'll do it after.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the positions that are potentially being cut, and we have descriptions of the, each job.
In detail, which we can give you after, if you want, or before. So on behalf of the Georgetown Education Support Staff, we would like to address concerns regarding the positions in our union that are in danger of being cut or eliminated due to lack of funding. We understand how difficult these decisions have been for all of you to make, and appreciate you listening to us. There are a total of four positions in the Georgetown Educational Support Association that are to be impacted. These positions not only affect the people being cut or eliminated, but also impact the remaining employees who are being told that they are to assume the responsibilities and job duties of these eliminated positions. Most importantly, some cuts will impact services and instruction for the students. The first position of concern is reducing the summer hours of the Curriculum Secretary, who also works at the Pearlie School during the summer. This would impact the parents of the young students at Pearlie throughout the summer because they would have less accessibility to the preschool office during that time. In order to compensate, it would affect some of the central office personnel and would add to their responsibilities to meet the needs of the students and parents. Secondly, it is proposed that one of the two Pembroke Library Assistants would be cut from full-time to a point four. Currently, there are two full-time library assistants that plan and teach for 733 students at Pearlie and Pembroke. They also provide teachers with their contractual prep time. This cut would significantly impact the curriculum and quality of the Pembroke and Pearlie School during the library time. The third position proposed to be eliminated is that of a middle high school instructional para professional. Eliminating this position could impact support in classes. This position is one that may have to be brought back if the needs of the students change for the 2016-17 school year. The last position that is proposed to be eliminated is a part-time special education clerk. Currently, there are two, two part-time clerks that fulfill the district's responsibilities. One who oversees all special education paperwork for students in the Georgetown schools for pre-K through fifth grade, and one who oversees grades six through 12. This cut will drastically impact the part-time secretary that will remain and be responsible for completing 45 hours of work in 21 hours across two buildings. That would double her responsibilities, and she would be held accountable for the whole district's special ed paperwork in the same allotted time. This will prove to be challenging. It will also impact other secretaries, whose responsibilities will be increased, and they will be taken away from their current duties, and increases the probability that important paperwork will slip through the cracks. In high-profile cases that escalate to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, timelines and compliance can be a critical factor in losing a student to an outside placement. Adherence to those timelines is currently challenging with the two part-time positions in place. Coordinating that compliance across two buildings will leave us vulnerable to non-compliance. We would like you to consider redistributing funds to restore these positions.
We have the descriptions here, if you have any questions. We can try to answer them.
Yes, we can, we've done research, so we...
Just take one, Katie?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have for three of the four positions. The, we have an instructional para description, a library assistant description, and the special ed secretary.
I think I speak on behalf of the whole committee that we completely understand that it's not easy, we know that. It's been tough the last four to six weeks, I would say, and just thinking about what's gonna happen, and, you know, it is individuals now that we're in fear of losing, and as you mentioned, the, the work that they, each and every one of them do is important to the district, important to the kids, so you don't have to sell us on that.
Right, right.
We completely agree with you. Anybody have any questions? Questions? You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had to go down the list of prioritizing the different cuts, and it was very difficult, and I know it was difficult for the superintendent and the administrators to actually have to come forward with that, and it took them, you know, a lot of time to figure out, really, when they're all necessary, how do we even try to figure out, you know, where the numbers will go. So when they came to the school committee with that information, it was, it's devastating when you see it in paper, you know, on paper, and you actually think of the people that you see and your children see almost every day possibly leaving. So it is, it's, it's tough.
Thank you.
It is tough, and I know it's gonna be tough for the individuals, you know, if this does actually occur, for the individuals that are going to be taking over the positions, you know, the, the extra work. I fully understand that as well, I mean, everybody's busy, the great thing about our district, I think, is that everybody does pull together when we need to, but it's not an easy thing for the people that, you know, may end up leaving, and then for the people that are here to take on the work, because as you mentioned, the special education, that's really important, deadlines, things like that, the librarian assistant, I mean, they're all very important people to us.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
You did a nice job, Amy.
I know, I appreciate you coming out.
I was nervous.
You didn't even act like it.
Oh, right.
Did a great job.
Very well.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
It's important to hear.
Okay, we have Athletic Director Chris DeFranco with Winter Sports.
Hi, Chris.
Update?
Hello.
Chris, I'm seeing more and more of you. Nothing I'm complaining.
That was good last night.
Yep, it was good.
So we're working on our handbook committee.
Yes, yeah.
Feedback survey, which we'll talk about a little bit at the end. So, yeah, we're gonna talk about winter sports, sorry that your headline says 2013-14, I don't know how that happened, but I swear this is from this year. So, just kind of run down the accomplishments of the different teams, go through the participation numbers, some of our areas of concern with that, and preview the spring, which we just started. So, girls' basketball earned a postseason bid, so the first in many years, and they actually won a first-round game against August, which was awesome, we got a home game, and it was really, you know, just a great crowd. We definitely filled the gym, but we didn't overfill the gym, so it was a really, really good. Yeah, it was, it was a good test of, you know, what a playoff game would look like.
So how many years has it been? Because I was thinking it wasn't that long ago.
The last group that made the playoffs was like the Kristen Hogan, Marissa Gannas group, which was probably four years.
Okay, so that was probably four years, okay.
Yeah, they came very close last year, I think they missed it by one game.
Okay.
So this year, they finished the season 14 and 10.
The number of seniors, so it was nice.
Yeah, there were nine seniors.
This is the year that they were able to...
They did get a first-team All-League player in Rory Donahue, and they also got an All-Star in Kayla Durkey, so that's pretty impressive. Boys' basketball finished 3 and 17, Ryan Slack was named Cape Van Lee All-Star for the third time, which is pretty amazing.
Wow, good for him.
Yeah. And just in basketball, he's also been named an All-Star in soccer, baseball as well. Cheering finished second at Cal's, and Alexandria Bovio was named a League All-Star. They always do a great job being one of the smaller schools. Wrestling had an awesome season, they finished 16 and 5, which is the most win total in school history, which is also amazing, because last year was also the most win totals in school, in school history, so they broke their own record. Yeah.
Wow, so Ryan is the, Ryan's still the coach, right?
Ryan Archiboy, yeah.
Yeah, and he was a great wrestler himself.
Yeah.
That's good.
And they really, really focused on team this year, which was amazing, because sometimes wrestling can be a really individual sport, but they made it work where they knew where to place guys so that they'd get as many points as they could, they won a lot of trim meets and quads, and it was just amazing to see how they calculated everything out and...
That's great.
Won the matches they needed to, so they did an awesome job.
How many kids from Ipswich are on that?
There are only three this year, yeah.
For a while, Ipswich was, it was more Georgetown, a few Ipswich, and then it was getting to be more Ipswich and a few Georgetown, so it's interesting to see that it's...
There's some waves, yeah, so, and I think two of them, one or two of them are seniors, so...
Okay. Twice. Children are very solid wrestlers.
Really?
On the team, Johnny and Riley.
Oh, that's good. Oh, good for them.
And two of the Ipswich wrestlers also are candidates for All-American, Academic All-American, which the wrestling program's been really good about getting kids that recognition, so they have to have a certain GPA in addition to being successful on the mat, so...
It's still one sport that I have no idea what you do to get a point.
It's not W, it's not WWE.
Yeah, it's no, it's very intimidating to me to watch it, but...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really, like, the more I've watched it, the more I realize it's a beautiful sport, it really is, and...
Smelly armpit in your nose?
And I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about the sport, because, you know, when I was in high school, there was the whole cutting weight thing, and, you know, everyone knew the kid who wore the trash bag, and, you know, cut weight.
Spitting in the cup.
And they really, they ensure that that can't happen, they have to get cleared by a doctor, there's a certain weight that you can't wrestle below that, so even if you lost weight, it wouldn't do you any good, so it's really safe now, in the sense that, you know, kids don't cut weight, and, you know, some kids lose weight, but that's because they're getting in shape, you know, because it's a great workout.
I have to say, my youngest son was a wrestler for a couple of years, and then they eliminated the sport, but he said he was never in better shape than when he wrestled, because it really is, there's a lot of strength, it takes a lot of strength to, to, to take those moves, and, you know, it's, it's pretty amazing. I would, I never thought he'd do it, because you're out there by yourself in the little singlet, you know, I never thought that would kind of be his thing, but he loved it, and, and our wrestlers, they're, they're so team-focused and family-oriented, it's really a great...
Did we have, do we have any injuries in this, in wrestling?
You can, just like any other sport.
His locations are...
Yeah, yeah, we had one major injury at the beginning of the season, student, his first match ever really hurt his arm, so he was out for the season, but besides that, there, you know, there are little nagging injuries, but just like any other sport, you know, there's risk involved.
Right.
But it's, you know...
Maybe a little less?
There's, there's protocols that, you know, you can't do certain things.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'd say no, no more injuries in wrestling than any other sport, yeah.
No, but fewer?
It's, we do, we do report at the end of the season, which I haven't seen yet, to kind of show the percentage of athletes and what their treatments are, and usually it's just taped ankles, that's the majority of treatment.
I'm just curious. You know, in Georgetown, it has, the co-op works the way it's supposed to work, because there's, there's enough kids, when I first came here, the first season, there were like six kids total, so you, that you do it by class, so, you know, if you don't have somebody to wrestle in that class, you know, yep, the guy automatically gets the six points. And we, you know, we had about six kids, and now we have more than one kid at each, at each weight class, in some cases. So, you know, there's a full team now, which is great to see.
Yeah, and they were recognized by the Cape Van Lee for sportsmanship, which is awesome as well. And again, I think there's sort of this myth that sportsmanship is, you know, the last-place team gets that, that's not the case.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, I love our sport, sports program, don't get me wrong, but that's, we've always consistently got it, which I think our kids are great, and I think they deserve it, but now I'm looking, I'm like, wow, so most wins in our school history...
16 and 5, isn't it?
And, yeah, and then we still got it.
Yeah.
Just goes to show that they really recognize the kids.
Yeah, they, I think, I might have told you guys about this before, but they changed the way that they calculate sportsmanship two years ago, and it's really taken that whole, if you're the last-place team, it doesn't mean you automatically get it anymore, which is good, I mean, there are some teams that are the first-place team, and they really deserve it, so I really like how they've changed that.
Well, that's great.
And then skiing, so skiing's entered its second year of a JV trial run, and they're not in the Cape Van Lee, they're in what's called the North Shore Ski League, so it's like a completely separate thing, that I learned a lot about last year when we were trying to get in. We're the host school, but we have Newburyport, Triton, and Clark with us, and basically the way it works is, we had to prove that we could have a stable team for two years before we could enter varsity, and on the girl's side, we did that, so we got invited to varsity, I just got the call, so we're gonna be there, which is awesome.
For the girls?
For the girls.
And no boys, huh?
Yeah, so we actually had zero boys sign up this year, so, yeah, they dropped us, which is understandable in that sense.
Just being a host, being a host school, does that mean anything per se, or is it just...
It just means we're in charge of the paperwork more than anything else.
They pay our, they pay our user fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which can be good and bad.
Which can be good and bad, right.
But one of the really cool things is, they let us compete in what's called the inter-scholastic meet, which is kind of the end-of-the-season varsity meet, and our team finished third out of eight against varsity competition, so Coach Larson did a really, really good job getting that team ready, and bringing the girls together from four separate communities, and really more when you think about Triton having three of their own, so he did a really good job of bringing them all together, and I think there was only one senior in the whole group, so they're gonna be pretty good next year.
I'm surprised it's not a co-ed sport. I'm just surprised there's girls and...
Oh, separate teams.
Yeah. Is that Tim Larson?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Good for him.
Yeah, he did a great job. And then, looking at our participation numbers, girls' basketball, we were down six from last year, so I was comparing to the year before, just to kind of see where we are. Because of that, we didn't run a freshman team, we sort of ran a middle-school freshman hybrid, and it worked, so that saved a pretty, you know, big cost that we would have incurred if we, you know, had done that, and otherwise, we would have been running two teams of seven girls, which is unrealistic, so...
And not financially feasible.
Yeah, but even competitively, you know, two kids are out of school, and you can't play the game. So, it worked out pretty well. Basketball was 56, was actually about our normal number, and last year, we had that spike in middle schoolers, so we were only down five, so we just didn't run a second middle-school team, so...
So, Chris, did, so the sixth grade leaving didn't really impact?
Not as much as we thought it would. Maybe more, I wonder if more kids came out because they knew they'd have a chance of making it, or...
Well, last year, I don't think any, there was one sixth grader.
Maybe two or three, yeah.
That made it. There was one sixth grader, well, you didn't have to, one out of the two teams had, had a sixth grader out.
Oh, okay.
So I don't, I didn't necessarily think...
Maybe sometimes the sixth grader doesn't feel like that's a sport where, you know, if you're...
Yeah, that you'd probably make it, but I didn't think that the sixth grade leaving would impact that so much.
Yeah, middle-school track's the one we're a little worried about, turning up, because that, there are a lot of sixth graders.
They were a lot of sixth graders.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. But, yeah, so numbers, you know, not dramatically down, and we, we saved the money with not having that second middle-school team. Cheer was 15, which is down eight, that's a pretty big drop.
I thought so, yeah.
And again, they go in waves, the winter is when the, they call them All-Stars, goes on, and that's a pretty big, you know, they're talking about...
Is that the competition?
Yeah, so it's, it's private, though, so they can't do both generally, because they overlap, and the MI rule would not allow you to be on both teams at the same time.
Oh, I see.
So some of the girls who like doing the All-Stars don't do the high school in the winter, but they do it in the fall.
Well, that makes sense, I guess.
Wrestling was down six, so we had, only had 16 kids, but like we said, they filled the weight classes, and they were able to do really, really well, and they were really performed as a team. 13 Georgetown, three Ipswich, and it was almost a complete reversal of the numbers from the year before, so it's interesting how that flow is going, and that's one of the things we talked about, is we need to get more Ipswich kids over here so that we can maintain that co-op.
Yeah.
It's been a really great partnership.
Yeah, well, they, those kids will have to go back to their school and tell them how great the program is.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the parents.
Skiing, we hit 15, which is your competition team size, so that's awesome, so we're up four from the year before, and that includes boys, so we had 15 total, boys and girls last year, or, we had nine total, boys and girls last year, we had 15 this year, so that's pretty good. Swimming, so our co-ops, these are the ones that we're not part of, we had one swimmer, we had 10 boys ice hockey and two girls ice hockey, so swimming's hosted by Triton, and Newburyport's part of it as well. One of our teachers actually ended up helping out with them a little bit, so she volunteered and kind of got to know the program a little bit, so that's kind of nice to have someone over there. Boys hockey with Penn Tocket had a really good season, they missed the tournament by one or two games, so one of their best seasons in a long time. And girls' ice hockey made the tournament, and they had a nice little run, so all good stuff with the co-ops. When you look at the aggregate, we're down 19 from last year, but again, when we basically cut two teams, it works out that we didn't really, you know, have a major financial loss from doing that. Yeah, and then, spring sports, so we started on Tuesday because of the snowstorm on Monday, Um, yeah, and then spring sports, so we started on Tuesday, um, because of the snowstorm on Monday, which is kind of unexpected, but. Seems like we have, it was a lot better than last year when we had three feet of snow on the turf.
I was gonna say, you don't have two weeks in the gym like you have most of the time.
Because the snow's already gone.
It was amazing, on Tuesday, we, you, you know, we were all planning on being in the gym and at noon, one of the kids grabbed me and said, there's no snow in the field anymore. So we looked at it, we walked it, and he said, yeah, we can play. So they actually, some of the kids got outside on the first day, which I can't remember the last time that's happened, um, it's been a long time. So we have boys and girls lacrosse, softball, baseball, um, and middle school track. Um, we're also in the first year of a two-year co-op with Essex Tech for boys and girls track, so the Triton co-op expired. Um, and Essex Tech was gracious enough to bring us in, uh, we actually have seventeen kids over there, which, yeah, pretty amazing.
And they have to get themselves there?
They do have to get themselves there.
So seventeen of our kids.
That's a commitment, right?
And we actually have six who are grandfathered to Triton who are over there, so we have twenty-three kids involved in track, which is amazing.
And so when they get grandfathered in, they're there until they want to, until they graduate, if they want to be.
Yep.
Which is really nice.
Yeah, because they've built some relationships and.
Chris, just to go back for one second, who's the girls' ice hockey, um, co-opted with?
Masco.
That's Masco.
Yeah, but it's probably six schools are part of that, I think every school sends about two or three girls and.
But Masco's the host.
Yep. And our boys lacrosse coach is actually the head coach there for the girls.
Oh.
Nice little connection. And then we have two new coaches in the system, um, Phil Desselitz is the new varsity baseball coach and Kevin Moyer is the new JV baseball coach. Um, and they've, I've watched some of their practices already, it's amazing, you know, the kids are just having a great time and it's been really good.
And Kevin's a new dad.
Yeah, Kevin just had a little one.
He's not a baby.
And Kevin's the one that was the JV.
Basketball, basketball as well, yeah. So it, he, um, he actually interviewed for the varsity baseball job and we just loved him. And, you know, after that process was over and we opened up the JV, we said we need to bring him in for an interview, he did really well.
Kevin was at Pembroke when I started teaching there.
Oh, really?
As a student.
He's a student.
Oh, my goodness. He teaches at Pembroke, yeah.
And now he's teaching.
Now he's a teacher there, yeah, I know.
See the influence you had on him.
All because of your influence.
Oh, sure.
Guess, well, well, in front of you, one thing that we have for the, um, upcoming fall is our golf program is looking to bring Whittier in as a co-op. Um, so we actually have a Georgetown student who was the team manager last year, um, but the MI would not allow him to participate on the team unless we actually had a co-op in place. So we have approval to have a co-op in place, but I did want to run that by you guys.
So how many, how many kids do we have?
Uh, we fluctuate anywhere from twelve to sixteen.
Of our children?
Yes.
And so, how many could a co-op team have?
Uh, you can have as many as you want, it's, yeah, in a match, I think it's, I want to say it's twelve.
Oh, twelve play?
But then they do like, almost like JV, where they get to walk the course and.
We're gonna be Whittier. So, are we anticipating that Whittier's gonna have more than this one child?
I, I would think two or three max, that's a, they have to get themselves here, which is not easy.
Yeah.
But that's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, it's like, you know how it is, Chris, like with co-ops, we want to make sure, like, in a team, yeah, a team that you have a lot of room, like a football team. You know, that's different, but golf is one of those sports where, you know, that's why I asked you how many can play at a time.
Yeah, and they, they'll play, it's just a matter of.
Didn't they take turns?
Yeah, so they, they'd have like a JV, so at home, they always played, but then on the road, they take four extras usually, because it depends on the course that you're on.
Yeah, and, and the athletes and the parents are all well aware of that prior to, like signing.
And the great thing about golf is you're playing golf every day, you know, so it's, it's the best deal in town.
Courses too, I mean, we do it at the country club, right? From what I understand, people say the course is really nice.
Yeah, it is nice for the kids.
Yeah, that's good, so that's in the fall. Well, it's nice to see the field being utilized.
That's awesome.
We love the field.
Yeah, we do love the field, but I just love seeing the kids out there.
That's great.
Already, because lacrosse was there the last couple of nights and there were tons of people out there.
Yeah, yeah, our girls' lacrosse has forty-two girls, which is amazing, that, that program is, they, I think they went two ye- maybe three years ago, it was zero wins, to six wins, to just ma- missing the playoffs, so they're like right on that per- perfect uptick, you know.
Yeah.
Wow, that's terrific.
Program's rebounding really well.
Now, is that taking from other sports are we finding, or are they new athletes?
I think when, I think when lacrosse came in, it hurt softball a lot, um, but that was years ago. And I think softball's starting to stabilize again, we have twenty-five girls this year, which is better than it's been. A lot of younger girls though, so we're actually doing a freshman team instead of a JV, just because the numbers work out that way.
So we'll have freshmen in varsity?
Yep.
Okay, and so if varsity needs a freshman?
They can pull up.
They can pull up.
Absolutely, they can't pull up the seventh and eighth graders.
Come up out of the minors.
Yeah.
No, that's good, well, it's busy, it's a busy time, it's a good time.
Yeah, it's just great that we're outside.
On the handbook.
Yep, we're doing, working on the handbook committee, working on a, um, parent and student survey. That's gonna go out at the end of the spring as a pilot to see, um, just get some feedback about the coaching and the athletic program.
Will that be for parents of, uh, students in winter sports as well, or?
So, we're piloting it with the spring, so we have to get it approved first, so by, by the time it comes out, it'll be almost the end of the school year.
Okay, so then the recommendation, whatever comes out, would be something that would happen regularly going through?
Yes, of course, yes, so once.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, we've been talking about it, yeah.
And Suzanne and I are both part of that committee.
Okay.
Uh, which committee? Seven o'clock next week, right?
Committee reviewing the, um, survey and, yeah, for the handbook.
Everybody that, they're doing both?
Yeah, we, basically everyone that was interested in one was interested in the other, so I think there's one person who's on one committee and not the other, but everyone else is.
So, but the parents of the winter sports, we haven't missed something.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what, what happens with, with, like, at last evening when you went through some changes, so that will then go to school council?
School council.
And then it will go to the school committee?
Exactly.
As part of the handbook, reviewing.
Yeah, okay, but the school council gets it.
Yeah, so then, then sometimes they'll take something out, or, you know, suggest something, so, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, you are all advisory to the principal, who brings things through the school council.
Yeah.
To the school committee.
Well, it's nice seeing, um, the kids partake last night, I definitely thought that both of the kids that were there, um, had some great input. They felt comfortable, like, talking and giving us their, um, perspective, which I think is really important, you know, that we hear from them.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're the most important people in this whole thing.
They really are, absolutely.
Yeah, and they'll tell you that, totally.
We're building our kids to have confidence, right, is that what we want?
Yeah. All right, that's great.
It's all for the kids.
Well, that's good, everything looks good, and I'm proud of them.
Just the revolving account is okay.
Okay, right now.
The regular budget account, isn't it, but that's not, that's nothing to do, that's with the turf field costs is what knocked, we, you know, we had to put them someplace. So we put them in Chris's budget and we didn't fund the lines, but we expended the lines, so his budget's out of whack right now.
Why does it say zero at the turf field budget line?
We didn't budget it.
It's free.
But we are working on some rentals, which is.
Yeah, we, we, we talked, actually, at our meeting we have with the GAA, um, officers. We talked about that and the importance of trying to figure out, particularly in the summer, how we can work out a schedule so that we can get more rentals. And of course, once the fields come online at, at Pembroke, then, then we don't have to use the turf field for everything. Right now, we use it for practices, games, and, you know, it's not fair to the GAA, they just don't have any other place to go, so we get that. But they also understand that, you know, if there's some flexi- if there's some flexibility even during the course of the year, um, where they can use other fields for practice and we really use the turf field for games, then perhaps, you know, if there are leagues that want to come in every, let's say, Tuesday night, because we all know that that money all goes right back into the maintenance of the field and the affording of the lights and all of that. So it's been a great partnership and it's been great discussions with them in terms of, I think everybody's on the same page and understands that. Right now, we're in a little bit of a pickle, but things are gonna be able to free up a little bit as we go forward and we won't have the financial challenge in quite the same way.
Did we, I know we were talking at some point about we needed to adjust the policy and adjust the rates and all that, did that?
No, we haven't done it, we, we need to go to governance with that, right.
Yes, we, we've been talking about having a policy around fees and then, you know, just differentiating them in the policy.
And increasing them.
Yeah.
And increasing them.
Well, because this one's really low.
Says the director of finance.
Right, so then you'll, you'll.
Cover the cost of operation.
So what you'll do is you'll go out and, and check out what the going rate is?
What people currently, I think there's one out there on the list server, what they charge for their turf field, what they char- if they have lights, what they charge for their lights.
We, we don't charge what others charge at this point.
No, I know, I know, we talked about it.
Yeah, it was like forty-five dollars an hour.
We charge what we currently charge for any use of our facility or field, which is fifty dollars an hour. And, um, if, if they are gonna use the lights, we charge them thirty-five dollars an hour on top of that, so they pay eighty-five dollars an hour if they want to use it at night, so.
But, you know, the fact that we have lights as well, you know, some places have a turf field, but they don't have lights. So, you know, I think if, we were talking about at the last GAA meeting we were having that, I mean, potentially if the town had another turf field, you know, that you just could do nothing but rent it out, the town would make a fairly significant amount of money and it probably would be used because there are so many groups that are, are looking for good fields, that they, all-weather fields that they can play, you know, all year round, so.
A revenue source.
And a revenue, it would be a revenue source, yes. Would be, but, you know, we have a partnership with the GAA and, you know, they put, they put the money up for the turf field, so, you know, we're honoring our agreement. Um, but, you know, we all agree that if there's places where we can, um, we can do some revenue generating, everybody understands the need for that. So, yeah.
Okay.
Chris, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Coming out.
See you in June.
See you in June.
Well, I'll see you before that. So will Barbie and Suzanne.
Yep. Okay, we have, um, middle school advisory update.
Julie and Heidi. Peter's going to be joining us, but he's going to be a little late, he had a little personal matter.
And Wes is gonna help us get organized up here.
Oh, we have to be plugged in.
How are you guys tonight? Good?
I'm hanging in.
She's sick.
Are you sick?
I'll try not to spread.
She's a trooper.
Oh, that's all right.
Around a lot.
It's, yeah, it's everywhere, so. I've been pretty good, I've been pretty good, but attacked yesterday. So, um, while they're getting set up, you know, you just introduce this, um, so, as you know, we, we try over the course of the year to feature some of the things that are in our strategic plan. And, um, a number of the, uh, middle school program elements have been things that we've been building on and building up to. So, um, what we did is we just made a list of, of all of the things that's sort of been around middle school discussions. So clearly the advisory program and we're gonna talk about that and then, um, so the team time, the way we're doing team time is a little bit different this year, so we're gonna talk about that. And then, uh, Julie can talk about, um, one of the things we, we did is we, with our professional development is we really tried to take advantage of NELMS, which is New England League of Middle Schools, which is really the professional development provider, the experts on middle-level education. And they offer a lot of services and, and workshops and in, in, uh, district PD and coaching. Um, it's really just a matter of what we want to, what we want to choose and what fits our needs and obviously what we can afford. Um, but that's been ongoing this year, so we're gonna learn a little bit more about that. And then, uh, one of the big core tenants of middle-level education is interdisciplinary teaching. Um, we've always had little, little bits of that, but not, not, I think, anything really formal, would you say that's true, how do you taught there? That there are some teachers who like to integrate and like to pull in, if, if you're studying, uh, the Holocaust, do you read the Dyer Van Frank? So you're, you're linking the content, but, um, it wasn't necessarily true across the board where you actually had teachers of two different disciplines actually working together, so, um, we're starting that work and, and moving forward. And then, of course, Camp Kiev, um, is something that, you know, we, we talk about that, like every October, it seems that there's a discussion about Kiev, which I really like to have, not have to have every October be, uh, a debate about it, you know, just kind of what, you know, how, how is it gonna work and how does it integrate? So, those are a few things, and these guys might have some other things that pop up, or you might have some other questions, but the star of the show today is the middle school program. And what we're doing.
That's great. We're hoping you can see it eventually.
Why is it?
You, it's really, uh, through picture, so I think it would be great.
So is it, is it just waking up, what, what is, why is it not showing?
Here, but not there. Can you see it?
Got the projector's on.
Hmm. Yeah, but should we ask the lady in the booth?
Yeah, let me go do that.
Oh, I think she's.
You can start talking a little bit about it, Heidi, we, how we started our training and.
Sure, um, so, I think this was the first year that, um.
Well, you know, we started with a needs assessment.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll just start with the basics, how's that?
Does it automatically switch?
Isn't it fun?
Mm, technology.
For when it works. Sometimes we have to reboot that little thing down there.
Should be on HDMI.
This is why for the boards.
Should be showing up.
Select.
I see it in.
I wanted to do a PowerPoint.
Oh, you see in the control room, that's interesting. Yeah. Okay, so why don't, why don't.
So we just start and then what we'll do is, it'll, so it will come up, is that a promise?
Don't hit the gate, it'll power it off.
I can hear the fan, so that's a good sign. Um, so what we did when we started to work with NELMS was, um, we devised a plan on how to get feedback from teachers and from parents, um, in order to create kind of a needs assessment. We wanted to get some, um, information from teachers, from parents, from kids and kind of pull it all together to help us, you know, ascertain what was predominantly happening in the middle school, but also what we needed to add in, um, to really make it reflect the middle school model. We had the teachers, we had the teams, we had common planning, those are all tenants of middle school. Uh, but we didn't always have the interdisciplinary piece, we knew that, but we also weren't sure, um, what exactly we were missing because, you know, different people come at it with different levels of expertise. So sometimes it has to do with scheduling, you know, we just wanted to get kind of the full gamut of, of feedback.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Important information to have.
Yeah, so we got some, some really great information and, um, they came back to the school and gave us feedback, you know, for the faculty and, and really kind of helped us shape our, our goals for professional development. We didn't want to go all over the map, we wanted to know if they could see the things that we wanted them to see, but also help us kind of guide the process moving forward. And they had great things to say, I mean, it, it, middle schools get cut very consistently in terms of common planning. And I worked in middle school for a long time and, and in some of the middle schools I worked with, they would cut common planning and teachers would teach six periods a day. So a lot of things would get cut, you know, during budgetary times. So the fact that the middle school is able to retain that common planning and keep that, you know, present in the schedule is, is huge. Because once you cut it, it's very hard to get it back. Um, so we were, we were really happy with that the bones were there, you know, like the right methodology was in place.
And the teams, I think, this year have been very different, um, I don't know if you all are aware that Peter put me as the team leader now for seventh and eighth grade, so what's been fabulous is that, um, we can have them together, seventh and eighth together. So we've done a lot of instructional, um, training, Julie's been there, um, we've had Allison in there with talking about co-teaching and just really allowing them to have professional development.
Come together as a team and get that at the same time, over the course of the school year, instead of kind of waiting for that, the next PD day, because they don't always come.
So when you say Allison, is that Allison Mahoney?
Allison Mahoney.
Okay, so what would her piece be?
So, in the middle school, we have some co-teaching models where there's a, you know, t- special ed and regular ed.
Yep.
And she's, you know, we talked about how, how to best marry those two people, you know, so that the best instructional practices are there.
Right.
And it was, it was awesome, so she gave them a lot of literature about it, so.
And how to make modifications and how to.
And how to teach together.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, um.
Veronica Schaefer and Kristen Havy are the two primaries.
Right, the only thing, the only question that I have, and I think I talked to you about it, was, um, on the parent's side of it, is knowing which teacher you're actually communicating with. I, I've, you know, I've just.
With regard to, yeah.
With regard to being in a class, you know, with a, with a core teacher and then a special education teacher, it's like, who, who do you communicate with?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, that, we, we have that same question at Pembroke, because we have a similar struc- a similar programmatic structure and we have had parents ask us the same thing there.
Yeah.
You know, if my child's a special education student and my li- I'm the liaison, or you're the liaison, you know, my inclination, because I have a relationship with you, is to ask you questions, yet Cam's the core teacher, so, yeah.
If they're co-teaching, they should both.
Exactly, and that's usually what we say to people, just, you know, copy both, you know, so that everybody's in the loop. Yeah, but it is, it is a question.
And I think that is something probably, it's a learning curve for me, too.
Yeah, more often than not, it is the liaison speaking on behalf of teachers, but, you know.
But then I don't feel like I have that relationship with the teacher, which I'm missing out on.
I think that's a, I think that's a really good point, we should, we really have to make sure we have a plan for that, that, that's, that's kind of interesting.
But I mean, middle school uses parent portal as well, right? So, would the classroom teacher be the one in charge of the parent portal? Because, I mean, when I have questions about my child's work, it usually springs from what I'm seeing there, so.
Yep.
I would think if that were the case, it would make sense for parents to first contact the classroom teacher who might want to refer them to the other teacher, if that was appropriate, yeah.
That's the conversation we've had, well Suzanne, you're a special education teacher, so how, how does that work?
With you, do pa- do parents tend to go to you, or?
Well, it's, it's a completely different model than co-teaching, so, you know, I have a separate class.
There you go, okay, okay.
Right, I do collaborate.
Right, but not share the responsibilities.
No, I have a separate class.
Okay, got it. Oh my goodness.
We're gonna keep playing with this, okay? Ignore us.
So how long have we been involved with the, with NELMS?
We've been involved with NELMS since September of twenty fourteen. That's when we started the whole needs assessment survey process, we sent, um, information out, we retained it. They, uh, wrote their summary and then in September, hopefully you'll be able to see that, our little schedule, in, uh, September, um, I'm sorry, they, they returned in November from the September kind of gathering of information part and gave us a debrief. And, and really kind of helped us guide the rest of the work. So we started to work at that point at, thank you, Wes, at devising, you know, a plan. What, we didn't know necessarily what they would come back with, so we needed to keep those PD days kind of open and kind of, they would help us, you know, guide that process. So, we started with advisory planning in February of twenty fifteen.
That was fantastic.
That was awesome, and maybe we can talk a little about that.
Yeah, sure.
And I, and I definitely want to tell you that Heidi was integral in this, she really helped pull together the whole lesson planning piece, but.
Well, it was really the teachers, it was amazing to watch, because the N O Ms facilitator came in. And we, you know, Julie had talked to her about, you know, what the agenda would be. But they put up, you know, they talked about advisory, the philosophy of advisory, and then they put up the chart pack paper.
Yay!
Thank you.
And the teachers just went around and brainstormed what they thought would coordinate with time and, you know, what should the te- what should the kids be doing in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, et cetera, and they came up with the themes. And then, um, a team of teachers developed all the lesson plans, so it was amazing, because we looked at curriculums that were already done. There's nothing like making your own, I mean, it's a lot of work, but there is nothing like making your own, because the teachers own it.
You own it, right.
It's awesome, and the kids love it, they love it, so I'm, I'm very excited about that.
Yep, so, um, from there, uh, the plan was set for advisory, but advisory didn't start until the next following year, so all that was kind of organized and put in place and then built into the schedule for the next year. Um, and then over the course of last year and this year, we've been working on like three tenants of middle school, promoting appropriate grouping practices, differentiation, how do you organize around the needs of children? Um, teaching in heterogeneous classroom and creating differentiated and also interdisciplinary units, how do you connect the dots for kids? Usually you'll get more learning and deeper learning when you're able to connect the theories across content. That's kind of where it all begins, in middle school, or upper elementary, depending on how the, the school is organized, so, um, so that has been the work, we're continuing with it, and, uh, it's, it's fun work. I, I love to see the teachers, the last training that we did with Janet was great, so we had a different trainer come in and work on interdisciplinary units. And, um, it was, it was fascinating to kind of watch the evolution of it.
Hmm.
Because people had their own ideas about it, but when they really came together and started to build off of each other's ideas.
I think it was a new idea that they weren't sure how to tackle.
They had to ask questions about it and kind of work through that.
But once they started, they.
They did a great job, they did awesome work around that. So we're gonna show you a little of that, oh, in this, yeah, in this process.
Yeah, we'll show you, we'll show you.
So it sounds to me like you're sort of creating your own model units, is that?
Yeah.
Are there model units for middle school?
No, okay, not yet.
There are model units that are interdisciplinary, but I think what we wanted was for the teachers to understand the process of doing that type of work together, so that when they have common planning, or when they're starting to plan for the year, they can say, oh, well, I'll be teaching, you know, this, and let's think about how we can tie it in, and Grease is a great example of that, the Grease unit.
Yeah.
So we'll definitely show you that, kind of as we go, but, um, how, do you want to just spread the advisory schedules?
I, I just, you know, it's, it's so awesome to see, you know, kids that don't really socialize with one another. When they come to advisory, there's only twelve kids in the class.
So they've broken it up, so that you don't have a classroom full of twenty-five kids, it's a small learning center, so there are about twelve kids per group, and every teacher will take twelve, about twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they are just doing different things that allow them to.
Build community.
Build community, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Is it always the same twelve?
It is, we're gonna debrief at the end of the year, some teachers want to keep the same twelve next year, some think we should mix, it's, you know. So we're gonna have a debrief session, see what we need to improve, what we need to change, what we, what we'll keep, but, you know.
Have you thought about asking the kids?
I'm sorry?
Have you thought about asking the kids?
Absolutely, there's gonna be a survey for the kids, yeah.
Some good ideas that what they really liked and what they, they could think would be improving.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, basically, the whole s- theory around advisory is, is building community within small groups of children, so that they have people throughout the course of the day, and they're not just with the kids that they're typically with in class, and it's kind of like building out and, and making friendships across.
And with their teachers too, they've really shared some amazing things that teachers were amazed at, and then the teachers also shared, you know, things that.
Can you give examples?
Sure, uh, there was one student who, they were talking about perseverance and overcoming adversities. And he shared that he had had like twelve surgeries on his legs. And the kids were, you know, kind of stopped, and then the teacher began talking about her child and how her child had to face.
Came together, yeah.
Yeah, it was awesome, so.
Right, so things like that, that wouldn't normally come in in a classroom setting.
Right. And, and the kids, you know, were very encouraging to that child, so it was neat.
So this is another example of a lesson, on, uh, anti-bullying scenarios, or, you know, trying to get kids to can- act, this is a great age group for that. Just to have that, they're, they're still, they're still fun and exciting, and they're not afraid to
Oh, no.
break out of the box, you know, it's, it's a great time, so, um, they're able to interact with each other and have fun doing it, and not be as self-conscious as maybe high schoolers maybe.
It is funny how uninhibited they are, they love to be seen.
And so what's on the sticky note?
So it says bully on his head, and this kid was the victim, and then there's bystanders and people that advocate, so they all play a role. Yeah, in the scenarios.
And a lot of these concepts come from Kiev, you know, kind of the work that they're doing over the course of their, their Kiev time. So I'm sorry that you can't see the words over there on left, but, um, this is responsibility to oneself and each other.
Yeah, so you can see on the right there, they, they have their eyes closed, and they're given like directives from the teacher. And they have to try to figure out, just by listening, you know, communicating with each other, trying to get, um, come up with the end result, working together, and, um, that's the sharing group, I think that might be the time where that kid shared about um, himself in there, so. Just encouraging each other. This was awesome, so a couple of the teachers took the kids down, um, just allowed them to. Yeah, that storm in there. You know, just building, building community with each other.
And what were they doing there Heidi?
They have, Veronica and Mister Larson brought them down, and they were playing the game, see those bo- um.
Bowling pins?
Yeah, the bowling pins, they had to knock them down in a certain time, and there's some on the other side as well, so there's another team on the other side. And I think the other team has to try to knock yours down, you have to try to knock theirs down.
And sometimes they'll do this with like marbles and those tracks, and you have to get the marble from one side of the gym to the other, but you have to work together and get all the way across the gym and kind of like work as a team, and, you know, just different ways of competing, but also supporting each other to get to the same goal, there's a lot of ways that you can do that. But we like to keep matches, as much as.
Always a good idea.
This is fun, this is a.
This is my favorite, yeah.
Yeah, new students, uh, new student initiative developed in advisory, so talk about the daily hi-fi, that.
Yeah, so they had a big contest to try to, how, the question was how to build community in our school. And so each advisory came up with an idea of how to build community in our school, and then the teachers came and wa- and walked around and voted on ones that they thought.
It was like a gallery of ideas.
They're still up, but, um, day five hi-fi didn't win, the lunch mix won, but when I come on the announcements and I say, oh, it's day five, they all jump up and they start high-fiving each other in the classrooms and in the hallway, so. Uh, just another way of community building, the lunch piece was, was, let's see, what's the adjective that I want to use? I guess I'll just say it was challenging at first, because you know, when you go and you sit somewhere, that's always where you sit Cheryl, right, that's your seat. Well, at lunch, I mean, why are you in my seat? So, uh, what happens is they get a card when they come in and they have to sit at the, you know, jack of hearts table. And they were like, what? But over time, um, the teachers have come down and tried to say, hey, you know, it'd be nice to know something about Joan that you might not know. So slowly, they're getting it, we separated seventh and eighth, I used, I had them all together, that was my mistake on my part. So now it's seventh grade and eighth grade, and, um.
So is that every day Heidi, or do they?
No, once a month.
Okay, once a month, so they get to pick where they want to sit most of the time.
Yeah, for twenty minutes, so I'm, you know, we'll see.
And do you, do, do you enforce that?
Yeah, what do you mean, that they sit there?
That they sit there?
I try, I try. You know, again, I think, I think the philosophy.
It's supposed to be a punishment, it's supposed to be, right, we want them to embrace why we're doing it.
They, the last time we did it, I had an assembly beforehand, and I just said, you know, I, let me tell you why, my thoughts about it as to why. It was initiated by the kids, so, you know, I didn't want to give up on the kids.
Idea.
Idea, um, so we'll see, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Well, I wonder if those kids whose idea it was would come forward and explain it, you know, like why they think it's important.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but have you actually, I don't know if you've encountered this, but I have, it's social, adult social events now, you walk in, you're given a card.
Oh, no.
And they say, now you have to, you know, now you have to go and find the person that has the same card and talk to them for five minutes.
And you didn't like it? You're like, what?
On Suzanne. But, but when Dominic was telling me about that, I was saying, wow, to me, as an adult, it was a little.
It's a challenge, it's definitely a challenge.
It's out of your comfort zone, yeah.
And you know how, how that lunch period is so important?
Yes.
I know, I, you know, and it's funny, because I go back and forth, but.
Once a month, it's not gonna hurt them. At the end of the year, maybe they'll say, let's try this.
Making people go out of their comfort zones. But that's why I love Kiev so much, because during, so at night you spend time, and I'm sure Chloe can attest to this, that you spend time with the kids that you wanted in your barracks, but during the day, you're normally with other children. That maybe you don't necessarily hang out with on a daily basis, which I think is great.
Yeah, they picked our different classes and what they had been, so you like, and you had to sit next to people who were different, that you usually don't talk to.
Right.
Do activities with them.
I love that, so yeah, same, same thing.
You didn't have any of this Chloe, when you were, you didn't do an advisory when you were in middle school.
Yeah, this is new this year.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, the more experienced kids get with this, through middle school, through high school, they'll be more comfortable as adults.
Yes, and I think, you know, the sixth graders that will be coming in, just, it will become, that's what we do here, instead of, oh, what? You know, you're changing the rules in the middle of the game, so.
Right.
We'll see, I hope, I hope it stays, I think it's an awesome idea, but.
I, I can see a lot of echoes of Camp Kiev activities and, you know, those kinds of things, and Camp Kiev, their whole curriculum is, is like an amalgam of always bullying, anti-bullying, and several others that are all, you know, uh, very much reflected here, I can see, connects.
So this is your team block board?
Yes.
Do we like this?
Um, this is Dr. Deroche's be- awesome idea, um, and I had never really heard of team block, but it's an amazing time where we have the entire middle school together. Uh, we just had the pep rally, oh man, it was so awesome, but team block is when the entire middle school comes down and we do an activity together. So for example, if you can go to the next slide, so each, I'm trying to, um, work with each discipline in the building to come down, specialists have this block off. So Lisa Ryer has been there doing, um, a creati- creativity one, this is Nora Cannon's, um, she and her, um, student teacher developed what is unity to you, and all the kids made like a little drawing of, she actually had more to it, it was, you know, talking about it, writing about it, and then creating it. Uh, she wants to make that into tiles and actually make it a mural. We just couldn't ha- we didn't have the time, but, um, it's again, just another time for them to come together. I think it's so important with all the stresses they have, you know, academically.
Just being an adolescent.
Yeah, this is only once a month, and they have a blast, so.
It's always something different.
I wrote about that on my blog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a neat activity.
We have done STEM in there, we've done a lot of different things.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of different options for that, and I'm glad that we're doing that.
Student recognition, so, um, important, I think, so there's different ways that we recognize students, um, star of the month is just like the high school where each, you know, in high school, they do each discipline recognizes kids. In this instance, it's the teachers that nominate students that they think, um, exemplify, respect responsibility and community. So each month, um, we get the names of them and we take pictures of them and we put them right up on the board, we, um, celebrate them at the end of the year, and there's also, the next slide is the shout-out board. Just when teachers see kids doing good things, they come to us and tell us, so for example, there's a kid up there whose technology, the, the teacher was like, I can't get it to work, and he just got up, helped her, actually went to somebody else's room and got a cord and, you know, so just people that go above and beyond, um, on the left there is kids that took the time to prepare for a, um, speech contest, which is in the PowerPoint too, but, um, I don't know, it's nice to be recognized, and I know there's a lot of ones that probably aren't, but we try to do that in advisory too, and. Yeah, this is Kiev pictures, um, the, the seventh grade, uh, I believe is on April, yeah, oh, sorry, April seventh. Um, and, I'm sorry, fifth and sixth, sorry.
And they're coming here.
And they're coming here, yep, and then the kids in eighth grade will go, um, in May. So I don't know if you have any questions about.
So on the fifth and sixth, Heidi, um, is that all day?
Yeah.
It's all day.
They come and set up camp and.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of the continuation from sixth.
Yep.
And then eighth, so it's.
So if anybody wants to go, just to drop by there that day, you know, if you just let me know, we can maybe make a plan to do that.
So do they still do like the rock wall and stuff outside, they still bring that?
Yeah.
They usually put it in the lower parking lot, yeah. So when did you start with the seventh grade?
Like, bring.
Good question, um.
Yeah, let's see, we've been doing that.
I'm not sure how long, it's been since I've been, um, the assistant principal, but I think it has been for quite a while.
Yeah, it start, it started when, um, you know, every year we talked about the sixth grade trip to Kiev, right? And was gonna, are we doing it, aren't we doing it, how does it, and, and the pervasive feeling of different school committee members over the years, as well as, you know, certainly I asked the question, like, so if we're gonna do this and parents are gonna spend all this money, it can't just be a nice trip, it's got to be part of the fabric of the school. Right, so if you're gonna teach certain leadership skills or certain protocols for problem solving, then, then your whole discipline system should be keyed off of that, your, you know, your students just should be constantly using that vocabulary. So, um, at that time, it was just sixth grade, and then the eighth grade said that they wanted to go for a couple of days, as they're sort of their eighth grade trip, because I think they used to go to New York, I think there was a New York trip.
There was a New York.
Yeah, and, um, so when they sort of transitioned there, we said, well, then we have to think about something for seventh grade, but we can't ask the poor parents and, you know, to do three trips, three years in a row, so what could we do in the seventh grade? And that's when the idea came up, well, maybe we can bring them here and, and have a, a camp experience here, so. It was an attempt to then say, at the middle school, if we're gonna do this, it's a sixth, seventh, eighth grade continuum.
Continuum.
And, um, it's, it will, it would increase the ability of the school to sort of embrace the whole leadership model and problem-solving model that the kids are experiencing in sixth grade.
And still keeping the sixth grade?
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a, in a minute, yeah.
So, in addition to that, we have, um, some technology initiatives going on, but you, you were here last week, um, or, uh, last meeting, and we talked about ways that we're kind of branching out in the middle school for, um, building in new clubs and ideas, and one of them is the STEM club with the microscopic. I emailed you that PowerPoint, so you'll have it, and this is in there, so you'll get some information on that, and, um, we also have built in our robotics, our robotics after-school program, building in functions of ro- robots. We're looking at that as well through Project Lead the Way, I talked about that at the last meeting, how we can build that into the daily lives of children, all children.
Julie, also, don't we have robotics as part of our, um, our, our technology classes, you know, as, as our spe- in our special block?
Our, yeah, technology class. Yep, yep. And our eighth grade technol- this is that, so this is a, a bridge design that our students did through the eighth grade tech and engineering class, which is that, you know, amalgam of class that we're breaking up over a couple of grade levels. That is very intricate work and very challenging work, and the kids are doing awesome things in there. It's so nice to see them doing hands-on work and really collaborating and working together to kind of do these challenging tasks, because I don't know if I could necessarily build a bridge like that, but they've done.
Always, always, that's an MCAS question, I don't know why they love bridges, but they love bridges.
We don't know why they love bridges, but every year, there's a question on it.
So, they learn a lot about the structure of it.
Right, and if you haven't kind of been through that process, it would be very hard to, to think about that, that, in that way. So we wanted to give them some exposure to that, to that work, and, and it's pretty typical of a, a tech and engineering class. So this is a little bit more work, this is insulation and its functions, the atom project, we love to see the kids work. And I, and you do see it in the middle school when you're walking, uh, through the classrooms and hallways, just looking at the things that they're creating.
Well, I was interested too, when I saw the insulation, I'm like, oh, so, you know, understanding how the insulation keeps the house warm, it was, it's good stuff, so.
Yeah.
I love that atom project, but it always looks great when they leave the house. By the time they get to school, a few of their neutrons will be falling off.
The electrons aren't, you know, it's really hard to keep all. The electrons aren't, you know, it's really hard to keep all that together.
I'm impressed Barbie, you did about neutrons. Last year until she got to school and then she's like, they just fell apart. She'll be able to take a picture at home.
Right, so this is what it looked like. So this is kind of the work about, uh, around the interdisciplinary, um, our teachers created their own interdisciplinary unit and every teacher took a piece of it, and, um, we were able to incorporate math, ELA, history and art, which was awesome.
She, I think the, the, the neatest thing about this for me was to watch the teachers start going, what are we doing? To, we need more time to plan this, we need an extra week, you know, they, they started writing, and they started writing, and they started writing, and it became, you know, from a, from a two-week unit to a month. So, I think it was great, and you'll see, um, so this is Ted and, um, well, it's Patrick Core, they're doing, when they did the Parthenon, they had to try to understand the mathematical design of it. And, um, they had, you know, to brainstorm it and question it, then he worked with Mariel, which I think is the next slide, and Mariel worked with them with the writing component and had them, um, strategize, so they, they're all together, but then they get in small groups, and then it's kind of neat, and all the teachers are just popping around and working with different kids.
It's not easy to have, you know, thirty to forty kids in your class, but when you are all kind of responsible in the work together and you know what each other's component is, then you're able to kind of support each other through that, that huge process.
Yeah.
But the teachers did so much work and they really deserve to be commended for really taking on a new idea and just going with it, they were awesome, they've done a lot of great.
It's neat how they just open up those.
Isn't that awesome?
I mean, that is, you know, I know people complain about it, but I, I see a lot of good things with that.
Yeah.
Oh, like this, I mean, you couldn't do this, you couldn't have these people here in one place, uh, you'd have to go to the auditorium or cafeteria or something, so it's, it's better for kids to kind of be in their home base when you can, can do that kind of thing together, it's great.
Oh, and lastly, um, this was the speech contest that, it was so wonderful to see these kids, and they were s- you know, they were nervous. Um, because speech, I remember when I was in high school, we used to have to take a speech class, I don't know, that's just me, but.
Yeah, public speaking, we all, we were all terrified of that class.
We were terrified.
That's why you go to Dale Carnegie.
But, um, they were writing on, um, hunger in America, so they, they, uh, had to speak for like three to five minutes and, um, present different his, you know, history of hunger in, in our country. Um, and those are the winners, I actually just emailed the, the parents because there's a second round, so they're invited to go to another level if they want to.
So where would that take place?
It's in Windsor, Connecticut.
Really?
Yeah.
On a weekend or?
It's on Monday.
It's on Monday, and so with the parent, it would.
They would have, the parents would take them.
Do a carpool.
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting, I wonder how many will.
Megan's definitely, she's like, I'm gonna go, I have, I have to miss school, I go, well, she, she was, we'll be okay.
She was amazingly articulate.
Really?
Well, yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna places, that girl, I'm telling you, it was, it was fascinating, to, to, she, she.
Well, knowing her brother, that's such a great musician and articulate, yes, um.
Yeah, they were very impressive.
But three to five minutes at that age is a long time, so that's quite commendable for them.
They've got their little cards and, you know, they, they get scored on how well you connect with the audience, it's not just re- reading the card and, yeah.
So is Mandy and Diane, then are they?
So they were the judges, um, and there's Sarah Anderson is behind there too. Uh, Ms. Jacobs was there and myself, so the, the teachers were awesome because they had, they kind of coached them and tried to give them courage to do it, I had girls trying to not do it that day, and I said, you can do it, you can do it, and they.
Was it in the auditorium?
No, no, they, just right there in that.
They have a little podium.
I mean, we're hoping it grows though, right Carol?
Well, I, I'll tell you, it grew, it did grow. I mean, there's more kids doing it this year than, uh, than last year, and it's an after-school, you know, so they have to prepare on their own, right?
Yep, and the theme is different. They win, they get the plaques, they basically get the plaques and they get, there's one in the middle school office that has their names that are listed, um, there's a, Woodman's just gives them like the recognition slip, um.
And a free lobster.
Yeah, I wish, right, but no, just, just the.
And beyond Windsor, Connecticut, what happens then?
I think there's a level three, but I, I don't think there's enough schools, um, that host, so um, Joe Susi is trying to get more schools to be involved, so I, I, I hope that that happens, so.
Yeah, cause we could be a host school.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in terms of public speaking for kids, I know through the Toastmasters, which is an international
Yes.
Public speaking organization, they have some youth program for like, I, I mean, it's been a long time since I've been involved with Toastmasters, but.
Isn't that what Jill Shaw is involved with?
Yes, yes.
It just folded. It just folded.
Oh, it did?
None of the people.
Oh, yeah. There, there are a whole, there's one in Haverhill, there's, there are a whole bunch around.
Okay, so, so she was trying to get a Georgetown-like chapter of it?
Yeah, it, it was there for two years probably, my website, um, but yeah, just kinda.
Yeah, I, probably twenty years ago, I was, uh, very involved in Toastmasters and, I mean, I was younger at the time and I didn't really delve into the, the youth component of it, but I know, um.
They have it, yeah.
I mean, so it's, Toastmasters is a great organization, um.
And they have a lot of, it's not curriculum is a very strong word, but they, but it's, it's a process.
It's a process, yes, yep.
Well, then as the kids get older too, they have to present in front of their peers quite often, and, and I just see with my own children how by the time, you know, my son's in eleventh grade, he, it doesn't faze him anymore, you know, but the younger two are still a little apprehensive about it.
It's hard to stand up in front of your peers and do that, it really is.
But I know they, they start at Pembroke, I mean, you know, you sit, when these kids go to community gatherings, you know, they don't think it's time to share, they get right up there, they get on the microphone, you know, they have experience with that, and, uh, they have responsive classroom has a lot of opportunities for students to speak in front of groups and as part of, you know, activities, so. I mean, it is one of our, one of our main goals is communicating and speaking, listening and speaking to one another and.
Right, self advocacy, you know, look at the spelling bee, those kids that get up there in front of, you know, so many people and that is, is huge.
And I think among our generation, it's probably the number one fear that people have is public speaking. And, but, you know, in our defense, I mean, none of us had any of this, you know, the opportunity, any of this opportunity or practice or preparation at the elementary school level and going all the way through, so I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful, this next generation won't.
Feel more confident.
Yeah, have that large fear and they'll just naturally.
High schools don't be rough.
Feel themselves comfortable doing it.
Pretty rough for self-consciousness. Less kids jumping up to the microphone.
It is, but, but. Practice, 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 and when everybody else is doing it, you know, when you're not the only one getting up and speaking, I, I have very high hopes.
Well, like through my public speaking work as an adult, it changed my life, completely changed my life, in a positive way, so.
You're very empowered, I mean, you know, we all have a voice, and when we feel comfortable using it in a positive manner.
So I think.
That's a big plus, keep doing this.
Yeah, I agree. Go bigger.
And the fact that it's getting bigger.
I think it should be mandatory.
But, you know, so, I mean, thank you Julie and, and Heidi for featuring some of these things, I mean, this is just a little snapshot, there's a lot of great things going on, but I think you know, again, it's something we've been talking about in the district for a, a number of times, I mean, when John Foché was here, he was very involved with, um, NELMS, and Julie Lamoli, and they were always trying to bring some of the the core pieces in, but it never really became, um, a structural, you know, uh, well embraced by everyone, and so when we were building the strategic plan, we said, you know, we really, we really wanna make this just not an activity, but, you know, i- if we're gonna be a middle school, then we need to really think about what is it about middle schools that's unique? And, and interdisciplinary work, tea- work in teams, teacher teams, coordinating, um, efforts, uh, not only around curriculum, but just, just planning together and thinking together about, you know, teaching and learning and what we're expecting of kids, and then um, the advisory is a very, because your, your kids at that age, as we know, many of you have kids at that age, developmentally, it's a tough world for them, it's tough for them to navigate the social, and we can't just assume they know how to do it, so breaking a, a bigger school down into even smaller units and expanding your opportunities to, to learn about other people is huge, um, so that's, that's great, and then pulling the PD in and really getting the teachers excited about thinking about things in a different way. Cause that's, that's where it's, that's where it starts, and giving the students a voice, and, and just seeing the pictures, I mean, that's a picture's worth a thousand words, right? Just seeing the pictures and seeing how the kids are interacting and looking like they're enjoying it, um, is, is very important. So thank you for featuring that.
Oh, my pleasure. How, how long has the advisory block been going on?
This year.
Just this year.
That's why we wanted to feature it.
We, we never.
Planning it was last year.
Okay.
Implementation of it, it was this year.
It's great. Times, there's many times where the kids will come to me and say, can we stay in here longer, and I'm like, hmm. Maybe next year, but, uh.
Well, advisory, math.
Right.
But I think that maybe the, the academics have changed a little bit too, because the kids are a little bit more engaged and, and maybe the, some of it's more activity oriented as opposed to to, to less, you know.
It tends to kind of branch into all the things that you do.
Sometimes when you have a middle school in a high school.
Yeah.
You, you, you have people who sometimes think that their job is to prepare these kids for the high school, right? So they become sort of like a little mini high school instead of a sort of a middle school, and I think that's what we were all sort of trying to resist, that that was happening, you know, so it was not about, the middle school is a mini high school, it's about the middle school is a middle school and the goal is to work with that developmental agent, obviously be planning for what, you know, how do we get kids ready to take the next step? Um, and so that's what I'm excited about, seeing the transition, I, I definitely feel that cultural kind of shift.
Yeah, I never felt that our school was like that, that they wanted it to be like, uh, you know, mini high school. I just remember Mr. Foché being so in tune to the middle school.
He was, he believed in the middle school concept, right.
And, you know, I, I, I'd love to see that it's continuing in that direction, because they are very unique individuals, you know, that age, all, all going through that ourselves, I still look back and I'm like, I don't see what the what the big deal was, but now as a parent of, of that age group, it's very, it's a very difficult time for them.
It is.
Yeah, and we really need to have that adult, um, you know, to, them being in tune to what they're all going through and being able to.
You have to understand them.
Yeah, you have to understand.
I always say there's a place in heaven for middle school teachers, people who love middle school children, cause it's, it's a tough age.
Everything changes, everything.
Yeah.
But yet their enthusiasm and their excitement at what they, you know, they, we sometimes think they're older than they are, they're, they're really, they're really kids, and they love to.
I think it's the last time they kind of get to be kids too, and that's kind of what I think about, it's.
Well, even them running around, I mean, they, for like recess, you should see them, they love running on that new field.
They do.
Oh, yeah, so.
So Heidi, I didn't even know, when I first met you, you were at the high school, I wasn't aware that you were.
Twelve years.
Until recently, when I've talked to you super tight, so you were in the middle school for twelve years? That, okay, and then what made you want to go into the high school?
Well, it's kind of funny, uh, in the middle school, you teach one prep, you know, for, you teach the same thing. I had gone to leadership school with NELMS actually, and I wanted to grow, cause I was twelve years of the same thing, I always loved those opportunities, and Peter, God bless him, is he here yet?
Not yet, he's gonna miss him.
He, you know, said, well, there's an opportunity, do you want it? And I was like, yeah, 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 and, um, I'm so glad that I did that, because obviously my career path, it allowed me to see what's in front of the kids. So now, you know, I can see, when you said, you know, you gotta prepare them, well, what does that really mean? Cause I didn't know what that meant when I was teaching eighth grade, now I know.
So you were navigating, but you really didn't know where you were navigating them to.
Yes, but I think that I can give the teachers a good perspective in that regard, because I, I know it. Um, in middle school, you know, it's funny, I, it's just funny how the career path happened for me, and it's wonderful.
And how long were you at the high school?
Four years.
Four years.
So twelve and then.
And Heidi was also the department head, she was, she was the.
I was the team leader, yeah.
So you were, you're social studies?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you had Jeff for at least a year.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Great year, it was an awesome year.
Yeah, that was, yeah, I didn't realize that, that that's weird, so it is interesting how you've come back.
It is, it's, it's wonderful, I feel very blessed, so, it's been a great, great career.
So, any other questions?
That looks great.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
I'd love to maybe go in during an advisory.
Oh, I'd love that.
You'd really enjoy it.
If you wouldn't mind.
I, I'll email you when.
Yeah, yeah. Probably the seventh grade.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, so we're gonna talk about Kiev?
Yeah, if we could, yeah.
Um, so I guess Julie and Margaret, we're, poor Margaret's bleeding, I have no idea. Her lip is bleeding, I think she's losing half her blood, she's been there. So anyway, poor thing.
She split it?
Yeah, I don't know. So Julie, wanna come back up again? So, 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 um.
She bleeding out?
As part of our, our ongoing discussion about, uh, Kiev and, uh, what we wanna do.
Yep.
We had a conversation with, uh, Joe Patella, a sixth grade teacher, and a gentleman named Reed Anderson. Margaret, do you wanna come up here and talk about Kiev? We're not.
You wanna come up and talk about Kiev?
Talking about Kiev.
You alright?
Can't, cause it's. Poor thing. She's actively bleeding. I want to ask you what you did.
I, I just can't stop bleeding.
I know, uh, all the whole meeting.
You're not on Kuma.
So anyway, we're just talking about Camp, Camp Kiev, cause I think we had talked to you at one point about we were looking to um, think about maybe transitioning to nature's classroom.
Right.
Which we still think is a lovely alternative, because we're very interested in the STEM, considering the STEM. So we began, uh, talking, so Joe came forward and said, gee, you know, we've had such a positive working relationship with Kiev, and we have of course heard from, um, parent, several parents, that they, they really hated to see Kiev sort of go away, and so.
It's interesting how Kiev can certainly bring people out.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it's real, and, and sometimes for the opposite, sometime, you know, there have been years that people have come forward.
Yeah, and we have had, um, a number of people who have said, oh, we think it's a great transition to nature's classroom, it's great too, they're, maybe they're older children, somebody's had experience with it and likes it as an alternative, and they are, they are, uh, they are similar but different, right, they're similar but different. Um, and we were thinking about something that would be a culmination, so instead of looking at necessarily like six, seven, eight being the continuum, we were looking at it K through six, with six being a culminating activity, so we, we had, Barbie was involved too, we had a conversation with Reed Anderson, who I, I don't think he's a director up there, um, and, uh.
Kiev or?
Kiev, Kiev, and we said, well, before we go down the nature's classroom route and start getting all kinds of, you know, uh, information about it, you know, they asked, could they take a stab at looking at the Kiev curriculum for sixth grade and figuring out ways that we might be able to better integrate some of the STEM kind of activities, you know, so it was a little more of an academic as opposed to just a leadership focus, so we met and kind of brainstormed and talked about some ideas. And they actually had a number of activities that they, they do, not all the time, but they're at their fingertips that, that really do fit into what, you know, we think would be, you know, experience that they might have it in nature's classroom. So we gave them the opportunity to get, go back, talk to the rest of the sixth grade team, Kiev staff have a chance to talk with Reed, to see if they wanted to. Kiev staff have a chance to talk with Reed, to see if they wanted to take another stab at. What would a week at Kiev look like with this modification? And so they did, they came back and they showed us what um they would propose to add. You know, obviously the week looks still very similar to the core activities that they would do at Kiev. Um so it's still, I guess it is a culminating trip, but then it's also a, a bridge to the seventh grade, since we're still kind of keeping that vocabulary. Um but infusing some of the STEM activities. Um so we, we haven't really told the parents that's what we're doing yet, we, that's on our list of things to do. Um but that's gonna be our recommendation of, of uh what we do and just see how that, how that works. Can always revisit it if we decide we wanna go in a different direction, but for right now, there's been so many changes, we thought if we could, if we could. Make a modification and keep something that's sort of historically been good and something that is a, can, can be a more of a continuum. That um we, we would recommend going in that direction. So that's, that's what our plan would be.
They, they really did.
Did they impress you Julie?
They did, they really came to the forefront with lots of ideas. I, I was really impressed. I didn't know that they had that capacity. That they had all of these additional things that they could build in, so I was really happy. I was, because it is kind of hard to make those changes. I mean, we have camp invention for the younger kids and we were trying to think of like, how do you connect all those dots? Is it possible to do it like this? And they really did come with a lot of options and I was really happy with that.
And what I also took out of that meeting that I was happy with was the way Reed came, you know, in the very beginning, he was, wanted to hear what. Georgetown was looking for, but he also was saying, I also, I don't want to um take away from our philosophy either. Like I don't wanna ma- I don't wanna make it so that it's no longer Kiev. And, and I thought that was great, because, you know, financially, I'm sure it would be difficult for them to lose us.
Oh, sure.
But he was still, you know, saying, there are things that I, you know, won't change.
Yeah, we can't budge on.
But we, those are things we wouldn't want them to change it to.
Right, but the things that he had were great that he already was doing, like the paper airplanes and. All the thing, yeah, the egg drop and, yeah.
So I definitely think it's gonna be great, I do. And I was just happy that they were open to that conversation, you know, that shows that. They, you know, that's kind of maybe a direction that other schools may wanna think about as well, not just us.
And I, I really would like to recognize Joe for that, I mean, he's the one that came forward and said, you know what? You know, I, I had a conversation with Reed and, you know, and, and he's open, would you, would you be willing to have a conversation about it and. You know, as opposed to, you know. I thought that was really great.
Yeah, and he organized the parent meeting too, that, that we had had, that, that was well attended. Um and people, uh I, I don't think there were people there that were against it. They were, certainly came out that all wanted to see Kiev. Continue and um I was happy.
So we'll have to have a, just we'll have to have the ability to get the information out to parents and, and let them know, because really. We would want them to start thinking about if they're gonna fundraise or something, to do it now, cause I, I think that's always one of the challenges. Is we don't approve it until October and then the trip isn't, I think we decided that the trip would stay in November, in November.
Already confirmed, you said.
For the next year, but then we, we could certainly revisit that if we thought that was a better time.
Do you remember they went in March?
I do, yes, yes. And I think it, November, yeah.
I thought November was better too.
Better for people.
I, I think we also talked about um having a parent night this spring.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, um, you know, we'd let parents, sorry, let parents know. And then, but actually have a parent night in the spring to look forward to, um, you know, the fall, so they can plan ahead.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it might help, it might help with the parents payment. Because if you announce it in September, October, it gives them no time.
They don't have time.
That's what we thought.
Yeah, what is it, like two hundred dollars?
It's a little more than that.
I think we have to, um, we've, we've, it's been hard to budget the money, I think every year to collect accordingly. So that, you know, from what I'm understanding, every year there's, we actually have a loss, we haven't collected enough from parents. So we, if we, and I think what we also talked about.
We, it's, we seem to overestimate on the number of kids that will go. So when you take the, the trip, the boss and everything and you say, okay, there's gonna be two hundred kids that go and only a hundred and seventy-five go. We can't make up, we've gotta make up that money and provide scholarships, so it's really been difficult the past couple of years.
So I think one thing we talked about, and again, we haven't um firmed this up, but I think we discussed having a. Um non-refundable deposit, so that, you know, we are asking for parents to commit to that and then if they don't go. We, you know, we have, we, because we've, we've already taken into account that number of kids and if they don't go, then it, it just makes it so. And that's fine, we can do that.
So, yeah, so I think we think that, we think that, that's the, the best course of action. Uh at this point in time and uh, you know, fits into our philosophy. And it does offer a little bit more of a transition, as opposed to, cause, cause when we talked to, to them about. So let's say we did it the other way, went to nature's classroom, it would work fine, it would be lovely, they'd have a great experience. Then the kids would go to the middle school for seven and eight, and you really wouldn't wanna take the sixth grade Kiev trip and put it in seventh grade. Cause now you've had people spend money, now you're three years in a row, they have to spend money on this expensive trip. And they didn't read and others didn't feel that you, the students would get the same experience. If you just started in seventh grade and you did nothing in sixth grade with Kiev, you just started in seventh grade with a in-school um session. And then you went up there, he felt that you really gotta go there first, you know, and then you could follow up at the school. So we couldn't quite figure out how that whole thing would line up nicely. Um but then when Joe said, well, you know. Maybe they'd be willing to make some adjustments, you know, would you be willing to hear some ideas? We were like, yeah, come on along. So we're, we're really happy to be in that, I think we're, we're gonna make a lot of people um really a little bit relieved.
Yeah, I think so too. Really happy about it too. I've always been a fan of Kiev, you know, because they, they just have this way of. Teach, these social emotional principles that have built our middle school culture for so many years. And now it's coming out in the advisory, you know, blocks and I just wouldn't wanna see it go away personally. Although I don't, you know, I recognize the importance and value of STEM and STEAM and.
All that, yeah, but you don't have to do it all the time and, and it really is playing out. Very connected now, it's kind of, it's got its own place, you know, and that was important to us to make sure that we connected all the dots, you know, for kids especially.
To really communicate to parents though and, and the greater community, exactly, you know, the, the curriculum, what Kiev teaches.
What is it?
What is it every day, what the schedule is, what the value is. Some people don't know and they just imagine that, oh, the kids are going off on a little vacation, a little fun time, that's not it at all, although they are having fun, they do enjoy it. And, you know, I, I've, I don't think I've ever heard of a, a child that really didn't have a good time. They all come back and they say they, they loved it and it was great. And I always say the food there is like middle school hot cuisine. My boys, my middle schoolers have loved the food. Now I've gone up there myself and it hasn't been, you know, exactly what I would want on. On vacation, but it's perfect, the whole program, I just think is so perfect for that age group.
About the food.
They do talk about the food being good.
But food's important to kids at that age.
Very important, yeah, no, it's essential to the quality of an experience.
Now Julie, have you ever gone?
I have not gone. Yeah, I would definitely go.
It is, but it's really unenjoyable.
Do they still do the parents' day?
Yes, they do, on Friday. Oh, it is funny, because they did used to do it on Wednesday, remember? Maybe the kids didn't go home, but that, there was this homesickness thing going on.
Well, just a few, there was a minority there. Will you be going Margaret? I would like to, in fact, I'm thinking I would like to maybe spend the night, a night. Um I wasn't able to go this year and I do, I feel like I, I miss the whole um the. You know, the, the climate, I, I miss what it's about. It's, it's different to hear about it and then experience it, so. But it is, it, it's a long trip for a day and I know, obviously, parents are doing that, but I'm thinking, you know, if I'm gonna do it, maybe I'll go for the night.
And you know, you should come up when they come to the seventh grade.
The cabins are very nice.
I know, I've heard that, that they're very nice. They're not, it's not a, a.
Yeah, it's not roughing it on the camp.
Yeah, although the kids have like three minutes in the shower or something like that. That was like a stressful thing.
That was a stressful.
I'm gonna get my shower in three minutes.
But the most apprehensive kids came back thrilled with the experience in my, from what I've heard. And what my daughter experienced.
Yeah, that's good.
So do we vote on this or no?
Well, we, you'll, I think you, we'll vote on it. But we, we thought it would make, we thought it would make sense to tell you now, since we're talking about Kiev.
Yeah, because a couple of parents have asked me. What transpired, because they knew that that meeting was gonna take place, so.
So we'll, we'll get a date and we'll, we'll have a, we'll have our meet, we'll find out when we can come down and. Okay, thanks ladies.
Thank you, feel better.
Go to the hospital maybe.
Thank you for the information that you provided in there. I was happy to um hear. We, we had already gotten the update about the catwalk for cancer, but I didn't see that brochure and that was beautiful. Yeah, it was very nice how they did it and they were uh very successful. I was shocked to see how much money that other schools, Central Catholic raised. Three, was, well, they've been doing it for eight years, it said, and I think they said three hundred thousand.
What?
What? Yeah, look, that could be.
I think they have a very extensive fundraising.
Central Catholic High School has raised over three hundred thousand within the past eight years.
Oh, eight years.
Okay, so over eight years.
I, I got their brochure and they have a very large group of, of donors to the.
Yeah, that's, I was impressed and I'm, I'm so glad to see that this is gonna be. That this will be, and there, I, well, I shouldn't, I'm gonna misspeak, I don't know how big their school is.
I don't know.
But I, I bet it's bigger than ours. So that's what I'm saying, so I'm glad that we're gonna continue with that. I think that's great.
Well, it was student, it was student organized and run, which was the best part of it. They really did a great job.
And of course the spelling bee, the pictures and, and the parents that took all those pictures that are on the website. Like I didn't have an opportunity to go, but I felt like I was there because the pictures were so great, they, did you get a chance to look at? That was really nice. Does anyone have any questions about the information on there?
Transportation survey in there, did you see, did you notice that we stuck that in there?
Yeah, and also the DECA, thank you for providing the, the results.
I actually, I was working on a blog before I came, but um there are twelve students that are going to go to the nationals in Tennessee. In, in the middle of the month of April. Um I believe nine that actually received trophies at the state. At the, at the state competition and then there's three others that are going for a, a leadership category. I'm not exactly sure how that worked, but. Thank you to Cheryl and Pam who actually um judged at the states.
It's a great experience, isn't it?
It really is, it's very inspiring. I mean, the students are just so.
And obvious, obviously you don't judge the Georgetown group, right?
That's correct. Actually, a, a girl from Georgetown came up to my desk and I immediately, I knew that, you know, this couldn't be. But then I, so I asked the, the um proctor, I said, you know, is there a system in place to prevent that from happening? Because I know that it really shouldn't. And he said, oh, yes, yes, it just didn't work out this time, so in theory that, you know, it shouldn't happen, but I wanted to know, just in.
Right.
You know, that was an effort to prevent that.
So they're going to Tennessee, so that's quite, that's a lot of kids.
There is a lot of kids.
Is, is that more than normal?
Uh it, I think it is more than normal. Um in talking to Michael Kelly the other day, because they, the DECA ran a dodgeball tournament.
Yeah, last Friday.
Over for the dodgeball tournament and uh they didn't get as many kids as they wanted, but oh boy, those kids had a blast.
Well, I have to tell you, there were a whole group of middle schoolers that got two teams. Steven was on, and I kept saying to my son, I'm like, the dodgeball is not for middle schoolers. He's like, I don't know, they took my money and blah blah. No, they ended up giving it back and, but they wanted to participate, but I'm glad they didn't.
They were serious dodgeball players, let me tell you that.
All thinking they were gonna do it.
Um but uh.
So they didn't have.
So I was talking to Michael Kelly and he said that actually, you know, it was the, it's the most successful um. Event that they've had at the states and the, the greatest number of kids going to nationals this year, so.
That's fantastic.
That's quite a financial.
A big financial commitment, but they do some fundra- they do some fundraising, you know, as you say. Um over the, over the course of the year to help out, defray the cost of it. I'm sure there is some financial commitment on the part of the parents though.
Right.
You know, but.
So is that something that Lisa will come in front of us or do we already do that when we, because they're going away, like all?
She, I think you already did it.
So it's not like it has, well, I do remember she came, so it's not that it has to, we now have to say exactly how many kids.
No, no, just that you're approving that it's, you, you, you're allowing them to go out of state, yeah.
Well, I look forward to hearing how well they do that, that's great.
Yes, it gets progressively harder, obviously, but uh, uh we will be very proud of them no matter how it works out.
That's good.
So all of these.
So the kids, if it has trophy next to their name, apparently, they have the, they've qualified to go. Now, that doesn't mean they'll all go, but they qualified to go.
Okay, so they can opt out.
Yes, so I, and I will, I will put that information in my blog, you know, the, the, the awards that the kids got.
Wonderful. Subcommittee reports? I don't have my subcommittee list, because my agenda is a little different.
Do you have other side?
No, none of us do, but that's okay. I think we know the subcommittees.
I saw, I saw a copy that had transfers on it.
When Laura's not here, just, things just fall apart.
I know that there was a backside to it, cause I saw it.
Cause you added transfers.
I added transfers to it.
Wishful thinking.
So I think I can remember what was on the back.
Subcommittee reports is what you wanna do.
Transfers, what, no, transfers, it was financial.
You're on the front page. Oh, you want me to do that first?
Yeah, I don't care what you do first, I'm just saying that that was the next thing on the agenda.
Let's go, so governance, did you guys meet?
Um we're meeting next Friday. We, we're supposed to meet on that DECA day and then we postponed it and then I think. Um Carol had to postpone it um for something, so next Friday is the plan to meet. And I know we're gonna review this bus survey. Um and that's where we're at with that.
Do you wanna talk about the bus survey results quickly? We did, yeah. So there were forty-six total?
Yeah, and to me, the general consensus was um people wanted a bus. They did not want to pay for a bus and they don't want a central location.
Yeah, I, I saw that too.
Which makes sense.
One thing that I just wanted to point out, when I'm looking at the comments though, um is people are under the impression that. Well, or maybe they're not aware that you legally, we have to provide buses. For, for K to six.
Over two miles.
Right, but just in, because there were a couple of comments that just said, um, you know, if there's an empty seat, you know, you should really. Go to those people and say, if you're not gonna use them, then give up the seat, but that seat has to be there for that child. If they ever need to use it, so I'm, I'm not sure that people are.
More kids that are eligible than choose to ride. So that's, that's the other thing, so if we say. Okay, we, we know that we can fit this many kids on the bus and so on an average, on average, it's, there's sixty, you would argue there's ten extra seats. But it could be that ten kids could show up that are eligible and, and.
And that seat has to be there, right.
But only if they have a bus pass.
Well, that's kind of the way we're doing it, but technically in the law, the law says, if you are within that, you, you, yeah. I mean, we ask people to register.
I wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, I know somebody mentioned something about, because obviously if we had to do that. Quick, express, double run. A group of kids would have to be picked up considerably earlier and a parent made a comment, doesn't this go against everything?
With the start school later.
With the start school later. And I, I, I know there are parents out there that don't understand. That the consideration is to start the middle high school later, but to bump the elementary back.
Not necessarily though.
The reason I don't know that is because there, there really hasn't been any. The reason I don't know that is because there, there really hasn't been any, any agreement on that, we're still exploring options.
But you're right, if elementary, yeah, I, I think when they say, when people see Georgetown Middle High School starting later, they're not taken into consideration, well, we have the same transportation, they're just thinking their day is not gonna be impacted at all, so you're right.
Um, so that was a comment that came out in terms of, you know.
Yeah, I.
But potentially.
Kids are up.
Well, potentially.
They're up earlier.
Yeah, I thought that comment was more um that they, what they really wanted was the kids to get there at the same time as the other kids. So what, what they wouldn't understand, 'cause how would they understand what we were thinking when we were talking about the options, is that the reason that they would get there earlier would be because we, we still have the same five buses. So, and the five buses are full, even though people commented the buses are half full, they're not. We, we've done the bus counts, there's one bus that's in it, in the fifties, but the others are in the sixties and two are.
Almost capacitive, right.
So um there really aren't that many, that, that many seats that, you know, any, any, any given day on most of the buses. But let's say we could make one bus be available, and so on that one bus we figure out, 'cause there are sections of town where there aren't as many students clustered, and so there are sections of town, we have multiple buses. So if you could go to the apartments, pick up the, the thirty kids that are there, come by Pearly, pick up the kids that the parents need the bus, and then literally go right to Pembroke. Margaret would allow the kids to get there early, that bus then has to go out and get the rest of the kids. So somebody has to get there early and somebody has to get there late, and the, the easiest thing to do would be to for management is to have the fewest kids come early.
Right.
Then try to have a bus of seventy-seven kids coming early and figuring out what to do with them, or you go out and maybe get the forty-five or fifty kids. You know, so that's, that's the thinking there.
Well, and the message that I got was folks didn't like that earlier bus, however what I heard back in the fall at the forum was that folks didn't understand why they couldn't drop their kids off.
Early.
Early. Well, I don't, I.
Yeah, yeah, so it was a little.
It's different groups, you know, right, yeah, I thought what was interesting is when we talked about, well, what do you think the most fair way is to um determine, you know, if we could option, have options but limited, what, what we do, and people said the farthest away should get the first priority, I, I thought people would say random lottery, because that ju, what it said to me is that the people who completed the survey are people who are probably in that one point three to one point five mile and haven't been able to get a bus, and so that's their concern was that they, they feel that they should get preference.
There were also, I don't, I'm gonna say a lot, and that, that, that is not a technical term, of folks almost with like the safety zones, you know, we don't have sidewalks, so it's not just distance, it's also the practicality of walking.
Saying if there were sidewalks, then it would be a lot easier for their child to get to school.
But the, what you're gonna wrestle with is there are a lot of streets without sidewalks, if you bust everybody that doesn't have a sidewalk, you have not got enough buses.
Even with double, double buses.
Let's build sidewalks.
Well, I think that, I think Peter Durkey has been talking about that in terms of his long-term infrastructure plan, is, you know, to 'cause I, you remember where Trulane is?
Yes.
For years, there was nothing there, so there's a sidewalk there. Um, there are a number of places that I think over in town, there's discussion about that, but that'll take.
Yeah, because they knew at that time, Trulane had tons of kids, so they needed to build a sidewalk.
So it is, it is, that's a, that's a, that's a tricky, you know, that, that's a tricky one.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting, so were you surprised at the amount of responses, or were you hoping for more? What, what, what was your thoughts on that? I thought there'd be more.
Well, the one thing we don't know is, we have forty-eight responses, forty-six responses, but we don't know if they have multiple kids.
Right.
Right, we, we talked about a question and we, I don't think we, that question didn't make it in here. But that was one of the things we did talk about was, you know, how many children do you have, because, you know, if you have forty-six people with three kids.
Right.
It's a different problem than if you have, you know.
Well, I think one of the things that we, as a governance committee, we were really trying to think outside of the box. And tried to be creative in how to help people get a bus, and they didn't seem to be open to our creative ideas.
Oh, I definitely think it was pretty good.
Um, because, you know, we recognize that folks have a need. I don't know, is that everybody understands um how our budget works, because if we, if we had money to get another bus, we would get another bus.
If we had enough money for two buses, we could probably bust anybody who really had a need, but, you know, that.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know if that would be my top priority, if we, I mean, if we had plenty of money, then yes.
Yes.
But.
But that's the point, right, if we were trying to fill every, like, somebody said in here, I thought was very interesting, they said, if you're really, if you're gonna change it, then make it, make it, makes, make a difference.
And if you don't.
If you're not gonna do it, don't do it, you know, 'cause, 'cause then you're, you're, because, you know, I don't know what the impact, we were talking about this um when we met with Cindy and Barry. I, I don't know what the impact of the new development that just went in is gonna be in terms of the bus, 'cause they would be on the bus route. Right, I don't know how many, I want, I remember meeting with a planner, but I think Barbie said it was sort of scaled back to be fewer homes.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two, so, but still, if they had.
And half are sold, so twenty-two.
What was the original number, thirty-two or something?
Somewhere in the thirties, yeah.
But they're not all built.
Three are occupied.
Yeah, 'cause I think at one point the planner had said to me, can we actually, that the developer wants to know if we can have our own bus stop, 'cause we're probably gonna have a lot of kids. Well, so we have to think about that before we start, 'cause you don't want, after you agree to let people have slots, you, it's really tough to then go back and say, oh, and by the way now, there are more kids eligible and interested, so we no longer can, right, so we have to.
That would've been a good selling point though, he could've provided, in you, in this house, you get.
A lot of the issues that I heard in October related to routing, and, you know, hopefully maybe this new software will create.
And we're getting drained.
And we'll also be able to take into account new developments, I mean, you'll put in the data and maybe it'll come up with like the best solution, whatever that may be.
We hope.
Within the parameters, within our budget or.
Barry was telling a funny story about.
Or maybe not.
How sometimes the, the software doesn't really know the streets, right, so, so he was saying that, that the software kept telling him to, the bus could go down the street. And he said, the bus couldn't go down that street, it just, but the, this program kept insisting it could. But, you know, they, it obviously couldn't because of the nature of the street, but there was a street there, but it wasn't gonna, the bus wasn't going down it. So, you know, we, we're, we're looking at this, what do we call it, trans, trans, transverse or something like that.
Versa-trans.
Versa-trans, no, versa-trans is the good one, this is transverse, this is a smaller scale. Well, one thing that is clear on this is that the, the people do not wanna pay, you know, totally fund a bus.
Nor do they like the creativity, so. You know, if the fee was small enough, they, they'd consider it, but, you know.
But it's not, it's not.
Enough to cover.
No, it wouldn't be enough to cover, what, all it would do would be covering the cost of the supervision. Because we do have to have additional supervision if we bring more kids to the school earlier. Right, 'cause, you know, our after-school program won't be able to, wouldn't be able to handle that, unless we hired more staff.
So when you meet on Friday, you're gonna be discussing this and figuring that you're not gonna do anything else?
You know, I mean, I, I think we really have to.
Time spent on this and.
Yeah, but we needed to, because we were responding.
Right, you can't say that we didn't try.
Right, so it was just to see what could we do, what does the public want, you know? And how can we make it work, how can we fit it in, so we sort of.
Clearly not gonna please everybody, but if we, if we decide to make a, a, a modification, then for the people for whom it works, right? They'll take advantage of, right, some people, it still might, might work, but it is clear, it's clear from looking at it work, not gonna be able to do.
No.
I mean, it sounds to me.
Willing to pay.
I think people just, they want, that, you know, saw, you saw people saying, um, well, why, you know, does the person that lives. Well, 'cause there's a mileage requirement, you know, if you eliminate the mileage requirement and just say, here are the buses, here are the bus stops in town. If you can get your kid there, your kid can ride, we just wouldn't be able to manage that. I mean, we were talking the other day about, you know, protocols and Mar, Margaret's done a great job, you know, checking off people before they get on the bus, because you know, when we had that little uh fender bender situation outside of the high school, and I went to it, when Cindy called me, 'cause I was right around the corner. You know, the kids are handwriting, you know, their name, you know, in so that they knew who was on the bus. You know, I, I would be very anxious if I was a parent and, you know, I, I'm anxious as a superintendent if I don't know who's on that bus. Um, so that's why, you know, we're trying to tighten up that protocol a little, but if we just went to the, oh, if you can get on a bu, get on the bus stop, get on the bus.
Yeah, we'd have no accountability.
Have no accountability, and, you know, I think that's the other thing people wanna also understand is about safety too.
Right.
We have a responsibility to get kids to and from school safely, and if they're on the bus, we should know it.
Right.
Not forbid anything would happen, you know?
But you're right, it is, a house has to be the cutoff, whether it's your neighbor, you know, I know.
The one thing I did agree with is, if you have a neighborhood where, you know, there's only two people in the neighborhood who, who don't qualify, right, 'cause the line is where the line is. You know, I don't know, maybe there's, maybe there should be some wiggle room there, because it's really, it's just that neighborhood. You know, um, you can't make exceptions though on Lake Shore Drive, if there are, you know, forty houses on Lake Shore Drive. But if there's a cul-de-sac that, you know, is one point four nine seven, you know, and it's two houses.
It's tricky to, like, i- it's tricky.
But then you open up that.
Then you open up the can of.
Then you open it up, but I think, I think there's, you know, there's.
Well, I do think everything has to be, I, I think everybody has a story.
Yeah. I, I agree with you.
We've heard him.
Yeah, look at individual cases.
Which you have in the past.
Yes, we have. So it's not an easy solution for sure, but we're gonna keep talking about it.
Well, and we do have to remember that the law states two mi, two plus miles, and we're actually giving one point five. Another half mile grace on that, so.
And transporting the, um, everybody over sixth grade.
The whole high school.
You don't have to do that. Yeah, you're right.
True.
It's certainly food for thought.
It, it doesn't sound like it's an easy thing, the transportation will always be.
But at least we, we got some good feedback that we can work with.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys, you have taken a lot of time.
Well, we also.
Thanks to Lisa Markany also for helping us get the survey out, that was really very helpful.
But like you had mentioned, it is something you had to do, because the, when the demand is there for, you know, information and why do you do it this way and why not this way, it's good that you.
We had to explore all avenues just to say, okay, this is what we looked at, here's the results and.
Right, it still doesn't work.
Not yet.
Yeah.
You'll never make everybody happy with buses, it just, it doesn't happen in any town, there's no town that isn't, there are issues with buses. Ours are more complicated because we don't have enough of them, but.
Right, so, um, also the superintendent's evaluation, we are meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow at nine o'clock, yeah.
Um, that had kind of been put on hold with all the budget, um, meetings and things going on.
Okay.
And then the negotiating committee, we have a tentative agreement with GISA.
Great.
Yes.
That's great, we'll talk about that in executive session, that's good, thank you for that. Um, Baker Adams.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
And, and I, the goal is to.
Wow, nine o'clock governance, no, nine o'clock superintendent's evaluation, ten o'clock.
So the goal, and, and more than the goal is, we kinda need to leave that meeting with.
Yeah, definitely.
Say a final draft, put a final draft.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure you were.
We were very close.
We're very close, yeah.
I think that's doable.
Okay, uh, safety, we haven't met since the last update.
Budget.
School building committee.
Well, budget and finance, yeah.
Met a lot.
Yeah, I think.
Ongoing.
But you should maybe tell the public, you know, that you went last night and when the budget might be discussed, or determined, where, where we are right now.
So, yeah, we were at Fincome last night, answered a couple of questions about um class size. Um, they are expecting, I guess, towards the ends of the month, or first week in April, to have their final, essentially final numbers.
Which I was a little surprised by that, I really thought it was gonna be the end of March, so when Chairman Lacy said, well, it could be April fifth, I think he said.
Yeah.
I was surprised at that, I don't know, I was hoping for.
March is next week.
It is next week. I was still hoping.
The last meeting, he said that's when it was gonna be decided, and then when he said, well, maybe April.
They're trying to get the, they try to get that book that they, that, everything just determined, 'cause they send it off for publication or something.
Um, and I feel like the longer it takes, the better for us. Just because I, numbers are moving, and I feel like the longer.
But they still wouldn't have any set money, dollar amount from the state yet, so, see, that's what I was hoping, I'm like, oh, maybe? That week, but then.
That won't be till June.
That's not till, right, well, I thought.
Isn't that amazing?
Usually it has to be the end of the fiscal year.
So bizarre to me, that our budget is now.
Right.
But the state, you'd have no idea.
Well, that's why some towns, June town meetings.
End of June.
So why should we?
Oh, they have, they often.
When I first learned that, I was shocked.
Town meetings and you chatter, they have to change the chatter. Yes, but that's, a lot of towns do do that, they do, they do it in June.
I think the tricky part from the school perspective is, they can actually pass higher chapter seventy funding, for example. And that money actually doesn't wind up coming to the schools, it winds up essentially getting stuck at the town level.
Now, is, is that because the budget, the school budget has already been done, so they say, oh.
So if our, if our budget is fourteen million and out of that is six million of chapter seventy funding, so the state's giving, I mean, the city's giving, a town's giving us eight million. So they increase our, um, our chapter seventy to seven million, would never happen, but it's a seven million. The town is still just giving us fourteen million, it's just that they're gonna give us one million less out of the town money.
It's a left pocket, right pocket.
Right, so we don't, whereas lots of cities and towns, especially cities that don't pass their budget lots of times till Ju, June thirtieth. They don't necessarily do that because they know their chapter seventy before, but our budget gets voted at town meeting and it is the number forever.
Right, right.
Unless you go back and fall town meeting and ask for more money.
Which one could do if we got another million?
If it was a meaningful.
Typically, it's not, typically, chapter seventy doesn't change much.
Right, right.
Not, not enough.
But on, and the, on the other side of the coin though, honestly, if, if the legislature wasn't the, you know, in the, in agreement with the governor's budget and they cut chapter seventy, the town has to come, they don't cut our budget, the town would have to come up with the money to cover our budget.
But how would that ever happen in our situation? They would never be able to do that, the town would never.
Well, they'd have to cut something else, yeah, or they might go back and cut us.
Cut us, and then we'd have to go back and cut more.
Well, but the inter, the thing that interests me so much with this whole situation is, and I wanna commend Pam for taking on the suburban coalition job, I could not, I just, I knew that you would do a great job with it, but the fact that they put together this committee to review.
Chapter seventy.
Chapter seventy specifically, but then don't take any of their recommendations.
So they can't afford it.
They can't afford it.
So why bother though, I mean.
Well, that's what happened in two thousand and seven, is that they made some changes. Exactly what, what was gonna come out of it, I mean, they knew there'd be an increase in, but remember the. The state has a billion dollars more in revenue, so I think they were probably thinking, okay, maybe there's a way to fund it, but maybe they didn't anticipate a billion and a half dollars in revenue.
But it's just so consistent across the board that every town is being so underfunded, yeah.
It's every town, I mean, to be fair, it's a mess, it's a, it's a nationwide problem.
Oh, no, I certainly, yeah, and I didn't realize that until the last couple of weeks, it is, it's across the country.
I look at how like they fund, uh, they fund, um, like the school building authority, it's a penny on the sales tax. Look what they, look at the money they generate, and look at what the amount of money they spend building these beautiful new schools, I, I often felt like it's just too bad that the only funding for education comes on the backs of the taxpayers, and they, you know, it falls into the community's perceived ability to pay.
I wouldn't oppose it, it should be designated money.
I mean, you know, I, I don't wanna be a Pollyanna-ish type of person, but I wouldn't give up hope completely on the suburban coalition and, and, you know, their recommendations. I, they're supporting, there was the Foundation Budget Review Commission was recommended, was brought about the legislator, um, like, they mandated this, this committee from last year's budget. So this committee, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, came up with recommendations in October of twenty fifteen, just this last October. And so this is what now the suburban coalition is trying to get agreement for all the boards of selectmen and the school committees and the finance committees of various different towns. And they're having a lot of success, and so now the suburban coalition are bringing these recommendations to the legislators, and they're having all these different meetings um, with them, so it really hasn't, exact, to my knowledge, it hasn't been. So it really hasn't, exact, to my knowledge, it hasn't been decided, I mean, it's possible.
It hasn't been decided.
It hasn't been decided, it it's possible that, you know, the recommendations of this committee could be acted on.
It's a zero sum game though, I mean, the the state has a certain amount of of money to play with. So if if they were to follow the F B R C recommendations and kick in a lot of extra money for special education and, uh, health insurance. That money's coming from somewhere, so the towns would lose it.
Somewhere else.
You know, it might be chapter ninety, it might be, there's no road money this year, or you know, so it's, it's, it would shift the pockets perhaps, but.
Right, but I mean, you know.
Maybe aren't as necessary, but.
I mean, the cost that the chapter seventy formula is underestimating, the special education and the health insurance premiums, I think these are fixed costs. These, you know, we, we have to make these expenditures, so.
We also have to pave roads, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not challenging you, but we also have to pave roads, we also have to.
Well, to solve the others, I mean, I, you know, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna even go to look at, looking at where that money would be coming from. Because you're right, it is, it is a pie and the pie is so large and that just happens at many different levels, at the municipal level, at the school level, at, you know, the state level. But, um, still, I I think there's a lot of justification to to say that, you know, we need some assistance in funding these, these fixed costs of ours.
Bad thing to do it on.
I mean, it shouldn't all be on the backs of the taxpayers, the local taxpayers.
Committee sign that, um, paperwork that we gave them two weeks on the ninth?
I don't know, I'm going to go present this to the board of selectmen on Monday, I have not been asked to present to the finance committee.
No, well, we talked to them, but you might want, maybe Barbie, you could send a note, a note to Jim and just say.
Left it with him.
We did leave it with him.
I mean, if you want, maybe I could email him, this is kinda like the essence of what I'm gonna be presenting, it's just some detail, the problem, the history of chapter seventy. Who is the suburban coalition?
Yeah, can you send that to me?
Sure.
And does it have to be a hundred percent?
Why does it make sense?
Like, does every finance committee member or every board of selectmen member have to sign off, or is it majority, or how does that work?
That's a good, that's a very good question.
For it to be listed on that suburban coalition.
Resolution, it would just be a majority.
Majority?
Vote of, of the body.
All right, well, because the paperwork we got.
Oh, I have, I I actually have it.
And it just, you know, the benefits, if passed, the resolution will readjust the share of municipal funding so that the state bears more of the burden. Providing relief to our taxpayers and two, it'll result in more adequate state funding to provide a quality education for our students. Plus other town services, the other town services that our residents here expect and deserve.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's like, it's like, you know, and there's strength in numbers, that's true, but as Michael said, you know, it's always, it's always gotta come from somewhere and you know, I'm sure there's places, I mean, we, we know that, but it's, you know, who's gonna control those?
And I actually, I mean, while I have looked at our, our town budget pretty closely, I have not looked at the state budget, so. I'm not sure I want to, but maybe I should.
Well, thank you though for taking that on.
Sure, my pleasure.
We'll be watching you on Monday night.
Sure. Great. If anybody would like to join me, you'd be very welcome, I mean, if not, I I understand, that's fine.
Nice of you to include everyone.
You know, I just wait, the invitation is open.
Is, is actually just worth, is that a school committee presentation or are you Pam Lindquist on Monday?
I was personally invited to present. Um, I'm not sure to which hat I've been invited to present.
I would say that would be the school committee hat.
Okay.
Pam, do you know when in the meeting you're gonna?
I do not, no.
Oh, we have a start school later meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, that was a conflict, so Suzanne and I can't go. Try, I'll try to come to support.
Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it, it's always a little easier going to, you know, these things.
So I agree with Michael, the longer the.
I'll send you a copy of what I'm gonna.
Final decision gets still delayed, it means that they're still entertaining the idea. And then one of the things that we do know is that there was some, fewer kids going to vocational schools next year, so there there is a little bit of money that potentially, rather than coming from free cash, maybe, could, um, you know, could, could maybe be redirected to the schools in the spirit of total cost of education, you know? Um, and that wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be necessarily out of free cash, which is digging a hole, it would be money that's already in the budget.
Right.
For education, so, I don't know, it'd be interesting to see. But the longer it gets delayed, it does make it more difficult for us because we have to let people know, we have a deadline when we have to let people know, plus people don't wanna be going out and necessarily looking for other jobs if there's a chance, I mean, we've been sort of saying, look, we think the best case scenario is this.
Right.
Right.
Um, but, you know, we do at some point, you know, need to give people an answer.
And you lose people sometimes because they don't take the chance.
It's uncertainty.
We get a little nervous and, you know, just out of curiosity, the walkout in Boston from the students protesting the budget. I'm curious to know what result, you know, did anything come out of that or?
Oh, well, I think. The mayor, that, yeah, they got extra money because of that.
There's a one billion dollar budget.
Yeah.
I I wasn't sure, I know a lot of them said that.
What level, what grade level students?
It was high school, I believe.
All the high schools.
They walked out.
Well, most of the, most of the kids in every high school.
Yes, so, you know, it was a protest to, you know.
Well, there are a lot of options for charter schools to take money away from the Boston Public Schools, so, I mean, I think they're seeing their services and their options go down. And then, uh, you know, other options going up and, you know, they they don't like it.
And it's not so much out here, but the charter.
Oh, it's big impact in Boston, big in, big, big impact in Boston.
Although that article was really interesting about the charter schools saying it's not what you think it is.
Yeah, yeah.
There is so much right now about charter schools, it's, it's amazing, everywhere you look, you can find some interesting information about charter schools.
Really two sides to the story, you know, it's totally interesting, I I if the, if the money wasn't the problem, if the money, if the state said we want all kinds of options for our children, we want vocational schools, we want charter schools, we want, you know, public schools. And we're going to adequately fund them, you wouldn't have a problem, nobody, even public educators wouldn't be complaining about them. But when they are set up, you know, basically as you can, you can go to, you can have your children go to a private school on public dollars.
Right.
And, and the public dollars come out of the allocation that the public schools would get. Like, if you look at Newburyport, cause we've been studying this issue and working with the legislators in the area, for the, through the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. Like, Newburyport, they're, they're one point nine million dollars, it goes to charter schools. So, you know, you think about it from the perspective of the school district, the superintendent, what could she do with one point nine million dollars? Right, she could do some pretty cool stuff, right? So, again, you, you hate to not have an option, you know, there's some students who fare very well. But one of the things that we've been talking about is there are some examples of charter schools that, when they were originally conceived, they were supposed to fill a gap in a need and they were supposed to be models of innovation. So, in some models, and we were talking about incentivizing charter schools, instead of saying we're not gonna allow them. Incentivizing charter schools who do work with the school, the school area. So if we found that we had a gap in a certain segment of the population that we really couldn't service as well as we wanted. And there was a charter that wanted to come on in and work and serve those students and then have a connection to the local school committee. So that, because now they're completely independent of the local school committee, but to have a spot on the charter board for a representative from the town, so there was more of a collaboration, you wouldn't see this kind of angst, but it's here or here. And it's, we get it, we get all our cookies, you get all your cookies, you know, so I think that's where the where the challenge is going to continue to be and they're looking for some kind of compromise because there's a ballot coming up and that'll be interesting to see if that goes for a ballot, ballot vote. Whether or not the cap is voted to be lifted. There's always something in the middle, but if you have people on both sides that don't wanna budget all, it's really hard to come up with something in the middle.
Yeah.
It's maybe, maybe our kids need to.
The other thing that I did put in here was something about the MCASTs, um, the new development of the MCAST, I'm gonna keep sending you those cause I get those periodically, you know, what is the development of the new state assessment? The one thing we have to be aware of is that the technology is coming. We have to figure out something at the middle high.
But we can't be the only school in the, in that position.
Um, no, this has been, since they've been warning districts above Park for years, they've been talking about this. But then, there, there was a little bit of pushback on whether or not that was really ever gonna happen for exactly this reason. Like, how can you then say to districts, you now have to commit all that money?
Right.
However, they've been providing over, over time, grant funds and now they've flex, had a little more flexibility with E-rate. So they're, they're really not having any patience for people saying, we're not, we're not gonna do it. So, we're gonna have to, we're, we're gonna be very good at Pembroke, right? We, but at the middle high school, we're not, so we've got to, we've gotta move that discussion further, even if we have to wait a year to do it and plan, you, we get the infrastructure placed, we've gotta figure it out.
And you can't send, and I'm just saying, I'm just throwing this out there, if we don't have the technology at the high school.
Yeah.
Can those kids go to Pembroke and take their tests?
Oh, for the day.
Uh, I, I, I think we could definitely discuss, we'd have no choice but to discuss something like that, we'd have to, we, cause we can't not give the kids tests. And parents aren't gonna be able to opt out.
Right, I, yeah.
Right now, they've been able to opt out, the, the word on the street is.
They're not.
They're not gonna.
And students in a, uh, thinking about a one-to-one, but, but sort of in the, in the bring your own.
Yes.
Which is gonna be part of it.
Yeah.
Can a student take the MCASTs on, like, could I take it on my own iPad, or does it have to be a school?
Very good question, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know the answer to that, that's a very good question.
Everybody on, on May thirtieth, bring your.
Bring your laptops to school.
No, but I, but at least we know that Pembroke is available.
Answer to that.
That we could.
That someone's just gotta start a business.
Yeah, we probably, we have some, we have some. Well, yes, I think, it depends on what the window is though, because right now, it'll say the long composition's being given on this day and everybody in the district gives it on that day. So, I don't, if they had a, if it was flexibility and you could stagger the time you gave it within a window, maybe.
So the kids at Pembroke would be taking it.
I can't imagine any school having enough devices to get all take the test to, it's like at the high school or something, especially big high schools.
But I think, but, but again, the, the window might be, like, let's say the window's three weeks for that school. So if you've got that many kids to go through it, you may not, I don't know how it would work if you've got the elementary working in that same window, I just don't know. But, you know, these are all ideas that we'll have to explore, but, but honestly, you know, I, I think we, you know, it'd be great if we could come up with some kind of an alternative that, 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 uh, that could work so that we're not handing kids, if we're gonna do it, laptops literally the summer before the online testing begins. And it would be nice to, I mean, most kids are, have computers and they're, you know, they're on them.
Just making sure the technology works.
And make sure that, yeah, exactly. Right, that the infrastructure works, yeah. So we'll can, but if, if you don't mind, I'm gonna keep sending you. So you could stay in the loop.
Great, thank you. Uh, school building committee, did you guys meet? Yes, yes, we met on actually March eighth, which was a while back, but I was not here for the, um, school committee meeting in the interim. So we met about the Pembroke School, um, the latest elevator problem was caused by a faulty weight sensor switch. Um, the, uh, D R A is in discussion with the vendor to replace controls.
Hmm, that elevator's been had.
It's like the fourth time it's been a problem. Right, right, um, you, yeah, so the, the, if the controls are basically the problem and so if they're completely replaced, hopefully the problem would go away. D R A is also in discuss, in discussion with Breat, uh, regarding the spring work, uh, including site work and landscaping. There be, they're gonna be meeting with them on a weekly basis. Um, there's new charges from Unger Electric for the shed, uh, which cuts the owner's contingency. At this time, you know, we were very concerned about the level of that, cause it's very low for Pembroke, um, it, it's, it stands in the, um, statements right now is eight thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, but we're looking for another twenty nine thousand dollars to be added to it. Now that'll be cut by this amount, leaving a potential probable total of around thirty two thousand. Um, see, the transformer in the front of the shed will be moved to the side. Uh, the priority list from the school will be requested once spring issues are taken care of. And Wes is gonna bring the cafeteria audio system vendor back to fix the system.
That's great.
Yeah, you know, we had a lot of trouble with that with spelling bee, so.
He ended up visioning too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't great.
It's not.
Not where it should be. When we were doing our opening comments, the, the microphone didn't work.
Yeah, not for a beautiful new school. Right, right, no, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the problem is, but it's definitely.
So the vendor's coming back, gonna fix it.
Good.
Uh, then we moved on to the middle high school and, um, let's see. So the special education, uh, very good news there, the special education technology, the wireless access points and the burnishing machine. That's Mike Anderson's burnishing machine for the floors, uh, were all approved. Um, the, the special, the special education technology was forty two thousand dollars, the wireless access.
Coming in.
Points were around sixteen thousand and the burnishing machine is around ten thousand, which Mike Anderson shopped around and got the very best possible price for it. Um, so this brings that owner's contingency down to around seventy eight thousand dollars. Um, Peter Durkey pointed out a section of the gym floor that needs to be sanded down and refinished near the bleachers, it's uneven. This'll be looked into, Mike Anderson will be fixing the wall on the first floor over April vacation.
Oh, you said that.
We were wait, let's wait till we get that. Six thousand dollars versus the fifteen that was allowed, that, yeah, so he's.
That's good.
Yep. He's a king of finding good deals and bargains and he really knows how to price things out.
That's great.
Um, Mike Anderson knows what he needs to do to plug up the holes, oh, the chorus room, right, we have, so he knows he's gonna try to ameliorate their sound problems to the best of his ability.
So from the, the rooms upstairs from not being interrupted?
Right.
Right, I imagine that would probably happen over April vacation.
How did that happen, right?
She said, well, we didn't, there were certain things they didn't anticipate, I saw.
What, a room above?
No, 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 the way the pipes, no, the way the pipes came down, yeah.
They knew there was a room above, so improvements will be made in that regard. And our next school building committee meeting will be on April twelfth.
April twelfth, yes.
It's gonna be a busy month.
Thank you.
I know, it has been a busy, um, couple of months.
Yes. So I, I also went to a crest, uh, the collaborative for regional education services and training. The special education collabora-, um, special education collaborative. And on March twenty third, which was just yesterday. Just yesterday, um, let's see, there, they've moved into a beautiful, beautiful new building, you know, it's at Nine Branch Street. And I know they've been there for a while, but I just can't.
Say, we already heard about that building.
Yeah.
That's the new building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's beautiful, well, compared to what it was like before.
And a lot is going.
Wasn't a night, yeah, they needed something.
Right, I mean, a lot is going on with that building.
Is that what it was?
It's an old bank.
Oh, yeah, the, the old campus is really, um, very sad looking, but that's up for sale.
Yeah.
Um, and hopefully the whole program will be moving to this new area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the building per se is, at Branch Street is also up for sale. And so Crest is, they, they have a, a ten-year lease.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Actually, that goes, and, and there are provisions of it going out up to twenty years. Um, but they're looking at all kinds of possibilities, maybe, you know, purchasing it, maybe renting out other space because there's other buildings that are empty and could be developed, um, they really, you know, they've got a great kind of campus feel there and there's also planned for restaurants and shops and things to be going in that area.
Being almost bankrupt.
I know, I was kinda selling.
Yeah, they're just looking at all the different possibilities, I mean, they're really, so they did the F Y seventeen budget presentation. Um, the total revenue is about eighteen million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, up seventeen percent. Fifty-eight percent of revenue is from member districts, New Hampshire districts provide fifteen percent of revenue, um. Let's see, what else is really important here, well, Bernie Creedon, who's the tri-town superintendent there, he said this is a grounded, conservative, good budget. We're in a very good place, we're staffed to realistic enrollment projections.
So, is he a superintendent for Crest?
No.
He's the rep, no, that's on the board.
Just like you, so it's, it's like you, you're a participant.
Right, all the different member district member says either a superintendent or a school committee member. It's mostly superintendents, more superintendents, the school committee members, but, um, so enrollment right now is two hun- two hundred and ninety-three.
And that's up from?
Um, it's, it's up from a hundred and thirty-six in twenty twelve.
I know, so it's eighteen million dollars in revenue for under three hundred students.
Correct. I mean, there, you know, they have other, yeah, they have other services, like they have professional development training and, yeah.
Wow.
Um.
It's.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll have their budget.
Yes.
You present it, you, you give it to us?
Yes, yes, it has not been approved yet. We did not, um, vote on it. We will do that at the next meeting in April. Um, you know, I'm just looking for things that are important that might be interest, of interest to you and I don't see much here, so.
Eighteen million dollars in revenue was interesting to me.
Three hundred kids.
Um, you know, I mean, they're, they're staffing up, they're hiring because their enrollment is, is rising so quickly, so they're, you know.
Well, and we currently don't have any students there?
No, we do not, so we're not charged a, um.
Right.
But they're not anticipating any kind of surplus, um, give back either in, in this current year or the year to come.
Like a profit sharing?
Like a profit sharing, sort of, yeah. That we would not get any because it's based on tuitions, so. But that, that's not, they're just kind of on, they're on plan, they're, they're budgeted to capacity, so.
Wow.
They're doing very well, yeah, very great things. I was really, I, I just went to their strategic planning meeting this afternoon and, uh, you know, to hear, i- it's got all kinds of teachers and principals and various different people in it and they're very inspiring. They just really care.
Collaborative, from our low collaborative.
Really care about those students, they're very highly qualified, you know, they understand the importance of the, the caring connectedness and um, community and we're working now on, on mission statement, vision statement and core values.
Oh, okay.
It's fun.
It's good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I say the next CPAC meeting is on April twelfth.
And are they looking for a, um, new?
CPAC chair.
CPAC chair.
Are they?
Yes, Shelby resigned.
She did?
Shelby resigned.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Hence the reason why she's not here.
I was gonna say, she's.
Oh, okay, alright. But, but she did a great job of it. She was there and we appreciate all the work.
It was many, yeah, several years of service, yeah, no, it, it takes quite a bit of time.
Yes, we. And I had only had the pleasure of meeting her once or twice.
She was great.
Um, so I wish her.
Well, she was perfect for the job, perfect. Cause she's, you know, she, she has experience from her own personal situation, but she really knew how to, you know, sort of work with parents and and, and staff in terms of how do you come to a, to a common understanding, you know, it was, she had some very good strategies about that and.
Well, and she's a lawyer.
She's an attorney.
And she's very, I, so I don't really, I don't know if she's gonna be presenting, I mean, the, the.
Yeah, she's probably, I think it, it was effective immediately, yeah. And she sent the, um.
But that doesn't mean that she wouldn't necessarily put on this particular meeting. I don't know.
Special education law boot camp.
About it. That's a good idea.
Oh, I'll, I'll email her and ask her, so I can just post it so people will know.
Exactly, if it's gonna happen and if it's not gonna happen, they, they should know that.
They should know that, yes, okay.
Very good, very well done.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Um, finance, we have some line item transfers to approve.
I have two questions.
Oh, sure.
I think they're easy, but, um, just the two lines that were, caught my eye, long-term subs and copiers.
It always does. Which one, which number is that?
So we put a lot of money into long-term subs.
Long-term subs, I see him.
Um.
Yep. And two forty-three?
Yes, so long-term subs is currently in the negatives, you can see by fourteen, nine ninety-five, whatever. Um, so I took the current payroll that was posted and I projected out because people that are out are not returning.
Right.
And that's what we need to get to the end of the year.
Yes.
So the people that are out now are not returning.
Is that everybody that we know is going out?
Yes.
And I've heard that we have a couple of people going out with.
Do in April and May.
Extra transfers?
Three? Oh, here, you need one panel.
At least three. No, I have an extra, cause I have the one that can be signed.
Yeah.
Copiers. Um, when we designed the Pembroke School and purchased the copiers, um, we had intended, Wes and I had met with Margaret and we intended to put color copier and very low-key copiers, I'd call them, in the teacher's room. So a color copy in the library and then the kind of downsized ones. Didn't work after one week. Didn't work and I didn't realize that we really had lowballed them.
What do you mean it didn't work?
Well, we didn't get finishers, we didn't get staplers, we didn't get faxes, we didn't get all kinds of stuff, we just said copiers. So teachers were.
We got the scaled-down version.
Teachers were stapling.
We got the generic brand. We got generic.
We got the same brand with nothing. We got the same brand with nothing attached. And so, uh, instead of putting it into the lease, we just purchased them. We just purchased them.
The, the add-ons or the copiers themselves?
The add-ons.
Okay.
So we added on faxes, you know, fax ability, um.
Oh, so it's just that they.
They weren't able to scan, they were copiers. So those are just pieces you add on.
Right.
And so we purchased them.
Well, we still leased the copiers.
We leased the copiers, yeah.
The teachers have to scan for their teacher evaluation and whatnot and.
That was kind of a lack of communication.
Okay, the lack of staples, I heard about that a lot.
Right, we fixed that.
Twenty-four thousand dollar.
Yeah, well, it could be that we were under budgeted for the lease to start with, I could get back to you on that. But I know a big part of it was that we just had to purchase and didn't we, I think we had to purchase something for the high school too, but I can get back to you on that. But I didn't increase the budget by that much. I think I increased it a little bit, but I didn't increase it by that much because this was a lot of one-time cost.
Right, right, that makes sense.
And then the long-term subs, yeah, you know what? We under budget every year and we cross our fingers.
But, but that, but the long-term subs, I don't know if it was last year or the year before. Do you remember? Remember it was last year that it was, it was.
Like ninety-seven thousand.
Yes, and we budgeted like forty.
Right.
Right.
We do look at the history, right, but we, but.
We had a lot of it.
When you have new, I mean, we've talked about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, not that it's all due to childcare, but.
Well, most, most of it is, although we do have a couple of situations where there was some medical, but generally speaking, it was.
Maternity leave.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
It's just hard to anticipate, right, I mean, we, we think, you know, we're happy that our family's growing, but at the same time, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to figure out exactly how much to budget, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's the problem.
And you can't ask everyone, so next year.
Yeah, 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 next year, could you tell us if you're thinking of having a baby or?
Yeah, I think that's almost bordering against.
That falls into the category of things you don't ask.
That's like.
Cross the line.
Um, okay, so to, uh, Chair make motion to approve the line item transfers as presented by the Director of Finance, Joan Laporte.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right? I don't have a, uh.
Yes, I have the original.
Oh, the original.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and we just have one more item to talk about and that's the.
Oh, the technology.
Technology.
Oh, no, what about, what is that? I don't know.
Do you have a donation?
Yeah.
Oh, the matching, the matching.
We do have a donation.
Do you have that?
Yes, I have the match, yeah, but you know, I don't have the agenda. No, well, I, I pretty much know that.
You don't have the second page of the agenda.
Um, right, so there was a matching donation, so.
Yes.
An individual, a community member made a donation and that person's, uh, company um, does a matching donation, so we received five thousand dollars for matching donation, which is very generous and again, we always go through this, that we have very generous.
Yes, we really do, it's remarkable. I know that this money, cause we met with the person, the donor. Um, we're gonna use it to help support, uh, some of the, purchase of some of the units for Project Lead the Way for our STEM initiative. And I think.
At Pembroke.
At Pembroke, and I think we're also going, that they asked to have it be at Pembroke. Um, uh, we're also going to look at, uh, expanding, um, the leveled, uh, books for, uh, the reading closet.
Okay.
And when the, we gave the, the family some, you know, they asked, what, what do you think you'd need and we gave them some ideas and they were fine with all of the ideas.
Right, that's great.
Yes, so.
Yeah, that will help us a lot.
Okay.
On the matching.
Yeah, that's great that the company matches.
This company always.
Always matches, which is great. So do I, would I say the name?
No.
I mean, not the person's name, but the name of the company?
Except the donation.
Okay, so the Chair will issue a motion to accept the anonymous and very generous donation um, in the amount of five thousand dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so the last item is actually a little different than we thought it was when I wrote this. Um, so, we have a little bit more homework today, by my, a little bit more homework today. And, uh, several years ago, I forgot what, what the year was when Jim, Jim Pecone was here as the businessman.
Two thousand, early two thousand twelve.
Yeah. He put forth a, a multi-year lease with the option to buy for, to replace all of the servers. And he, at the time, expected the servers, based on what the vendor told him, to operate well for ten years. So our servers are not that old.
So twenty-twelve.
Yes, so apparently up until, when Mary Ann, Mary Ellen Cronin was here, so up until the building project started in the summer.
Yeah.
The servers were all backed up on a regular basis. Mary Ellen, when she was here, said she backed them up every Friday.
So weekly, okay.
Weekly.
They were on automatic, but I think she just made sure every Friday that it was working correctly.
Right, so then when the building project started and there was a lot of stuff going on with technology, the, um, the switches were apparently not really configured for the back, so the backup system was not really configured correctly. So the problem hasn't been a two-year problem, the problem's been, you know, since the summer. So, we, we were able to contact Chuck Adam, our OPM, and said, hey, you know, this should be part of the, of the commitment of the person doing the technology that the backup system needed to be enabled and configured correctly. Chuck agrees and has directed, said the building project will pay the cost to do that and so we're in the process of contacting the vendor that worked on that project to, um, have the backup solution put in place. So the servers that we have are continuing to run and then, you know, we'll, we can revisit exactly what we need to do in the long term.
Right.
But it might at least allow us to, um, do the assessment of, of the network because we'll, we'll be in a situation where any vendor that would come in would be able to take a look at it and wouldn't be nervous about the liability of.
Right, of crashing.
Crashing and then being responsible for it. So, that's the plan right now, is that, uh, and then we, we did talk about another solution that was thrown around was migrating the, um, the Outlook, uh, the server, that, that's particular server into the cloud.
Oh.
Right, and once you move it, once you move it into the, once you move it into, once you move it into the cloud.
The hand gesture.
There, we're just in the process of figuring out what the cost is to get it to the cloud.
See, I have ideas.
So.
You do.
Yeah, so there, there's a, there's a variety of ideas, one is to, you know, we, but we don't think at this moment in time we need to purchase new servers. So that's not the direction we wanna go in.
So, but, can I just ask you a question?
Of course, I might have the answer.
So, what made them think that they were so old?
Well, there, again, it depends on what threshold you use, right? In public schools, we have copiers that businesses would turn over every three years with half the use and we kill them and keep them ten years. Same thing happens in schools around technology, right, so servers in business, you know, are constantly being.
So it was more just their own, his own.
Well, their, their assessment is that, you know, if they came in two thousand twelve and it's two thousand sixteen, they're four years going on five years. You know, the, the, the system is, 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 you know, it's on borrowed time if you accept the fact that three to five years servers is a useful life of a server. So, it, to me, the solution, as I'm learning more about this, was more of it, I don't think it's not a good solution. I think it's a solution we, we can't afford to do at this point in time, as we clearly know. So, the first priority in our thought process is, if it's as simple as getting the vendor to come in, do the configuration off of the servers that we actually have now, so we can do an assessment of the network and try to figure out what that looks like, that makes more sense to us, especially since the building project, we could pay for that.
Mm-hmm.
Right, rather than try to figure out, how do we scramble around to get a certain amount of money every month to, you know, kind of, you know, do the backup for four months and then scramble.
So.
So right now, we wouldn't have.
Clear, there's no, okay, there's no cost to us, but the vendor's gonna come in, we configure.
Yep, we get the backup.
Get the backup happening again.
Right, and so then, once we, we have someone come, like you had said, they wouldn't be concerned.
Right.
If something happened that they would be liable for it, so then we'll go forward and then that would be our cost.
That, that's right, that's, so we have to figure out what that, what that looks like and what, to what extent we need to invest.
And I would think it would be something quickly, still, I mean, it's something that we need to.
We need to get an assessment, so we know what we're talking about, especially if we're looking at, you know, six months from now, a year from now, looking at increasing the number of devices that we have, you know, that are hitting the network.
Do we, and, and I would have to look back at, at Wes's plan, but do we have an inventory of, uh, some, you know, dates that, that everything went into service? And essentially a, like a, a capital budget?
I'm not sure.
For the next.
I think there was a capital budget.
We, we have an inventory, I can answer that, so when we brought, uh, when Mike Anderson and I brought school dude in, I don't know, I think three years ago, um, we did buy the IT piece and Barry, we didn't have Wes at the time, Barry at the time inventoried everything that was at the elementary levels.
Okay.
I think that the high school was done, I'm not positive, but when Wes started, I reiterated to him that we needed everything inventoried. So I believe that everything is inventoried. As far as a capital plan, um, as he years out, as part of Wes's technology plan, I believe there's the capital.
There's, I know there's, in words, there's a plan?
Right, but there's no money, no. But, but the town is, the town is not supported, um, capital, you, you were on that committee, capital project, technology.
Cause they say.
Well, and I guess I'm, I'm looking at it not from a, like a formal town CIP perspective, but from a, us budget, anticipating that there won't be money from the town, us budgeting, we know in twenty-seventeen.
The only thing that has stayed in our budget is when we put the leases in.
Yeah, we've kept them in there.
It was like, I think it's like fifty-four thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say fifty grand.
We have made a commitment not to take those out, even though the leases, you know, were turning over, I think.
Cause there's new things that are going.
Wes took out new leases and bought, you know, the Apples or Max and whatever for the teachers and all that. So, we've committed to that, but that's really not capital if, if you're committed to leases every year.
Right. Right. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm glad it can work through the, the building project and it feels like we're getting lucky in that sense. I guess I'm just worried that there's gonna be another one of these and there won't be a building project
Oh, yeah.
to call on and.
Right, so that's the question, is the question, you know, if it goes into the cloud, then you, you know, that's a different, that's a different outlay of money.
I, I guess my question and, and I'm not, I'm not calling into, to question sort of bigger technology issues, but this one seemed to just come up recently, it was kind of a fire drill and then it, it's the next thing that we don't realize that.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm worried about.
This one came up because we talked to, we talked about getting, uh, in anticipation of what we would need to, uh, do for the one-to-one.
Right.
We said we need an assessment of the network.
Right.
And then the, the backup was seen to be a problem, so that's why that came up. But you're right, you don't, you know, hopefully we don't have these kind of things bubbling up all the time. That's why before we really embrace the, the one-to-one, if that's where we go or the bring your own, whatever we do, we have to make sure that that's, that that system's gonna work. And that everything is gonna, you know, be efficient enough so all those devices aren't gonna be slowing down and, yeah, right, exactly. I just need to know what that looks like. So, yeah, there, I don't, capital budget, actual dollars plugged out.
I think it will be interesting though.
I knew the answer.
I'd like to tell you the answer that you're not expecting, but I'm afraid I.
Well, I'm just, I'm just scared that in twenty-nineteen, we're suddenly gonna have a, a fifty thousand dollar expense that we need to figure out and.
I would like to know about the inventory, if he keeps an inventory. That'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I know a lot of stuff is tagged. I just don't know if it's fully.
I believe it is. I believe they kinda had something in place with Excel spreadsheets before we got the school dude.
I'm just gonna migrate it. Okay, thank you.
So that's the update on that.
Okay, well, that's better news.
Yeah.
Yes.
We were happy about that today.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I don't have the backside of my agenda. Anything else that I'm?
No.
No, we're good?
The only thing we've gotta do now is the GSA thing and.